We'll call the meeting to order. This is the October 20, 2025 New Garden Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We held an executive session prior to this meeting, starting at 6:15, to discuss personnel matters. First up, we have the public comment. This is for non-agenda items. There's a three-minute time limit. If anybody has any public comment they want to have, again, it's not on an agenda item. Doesn't look like there is. So, any public comment on agenda items? Doesn't look like it. So, I'll turn it over to Wendy for the public hearing.
This is an advertised public hearing concerning the Comcast franchise agreement for cable in the township. The purpose of this hearing is to basically hear from you about your concerns and problems. You could say good stuff, too, but mostly, we want to know any problems that you have with the Comcast, which we'll then be able to use to possibly negotiate a better agreement. So, if anybody has any comments about their Comcast cable service, please come forward to the mic. Going once. Twice. All right. I think you can close the hearing.
Thank you, Wendy. The hearing is closed. We'll revert back to the regular meeting. Next item is recognitions, the part for the Parks and Recreation, the 2025 Community Day, which occurred a week ago.
No, this was just, so we don't have like a formal recognition planned here for right now, but of course, he's obviously not in the room tonight, but I wanted to just extend appreciation to our staff, primarily, starting with Mike Buck, our Director of Parks and Open Space, and it's Ciaran Roma, who is in the crowd tonight, but I won't call her out specifically, who are kind of the primary staff representatives, who did the significant lift of planning, was it October 4th, Saturday's event for Community Day, as well as organizing all of the multitude of vendors that we had on scene. I think we had over 30, as well as the outside provider, Mighty Riders, who was kind of a strategic partner with the event. And of course, the proof is in the pudding. We had multiple thousands of people show up on Saturday afternoon for that day. We had amazing weather, which doesn't hurt, but essentially, it was the largest hosting for that event that we've had in township history. So, of course, you're a victim of your success. We're always going to try to see what we can do to continually improve upon the event, but that's also one where it's obviously, if you were on scene at the event on Saturday, you know, a very large and successful event. So, thank you to them and appreciate their hard work.
Thank you, Chris. Included in the meeting materials, we have the minutes from the September 15th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve such minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the treasurer's report. Can I have a motion to approve the paid invoices in the amount of $357,390.95, and the unpaid invoices in the amount of $1,090,251.16? And the detail of all such invoices is in the meeting materials. Is there a motion to approve such invoices in such amounts?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Third second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to recuse myself on two of the bills, which are for my employer in the amount of $1,074. I do approve the remaining bills.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have the public safety report, the third quarter report for Avondale Fire Company, followed by the third quarter report for Southern Chester County Regional Police. Steve, thanks for presenting the report.
What's happening? No, I can do it. Yeah, I'll just go here. Yeah, go ahead, next slide. So, our Q3, we show our actual income, budgeted income, budgeted income is divided by four, you know, for what we budget for the year. Our EMS actual income was a little high because we had influx in municipal funding. So, a lot of, some checks came in. And then, the actual expense is a little higher. We had a couple repairs on a few of our ambulances. So, two of our ambulances were in for a few repairs. Same thing with fire. We had some repairs on our new fire engine that ended up being warranty repairs. So, we had to basically take the whole rear end of the new 2021 Sea Gray Fire Truck off because it was rusting at the, where all the screws went in. So, they promised a stainless steel body, but they covered most of those repairs. And then, we had to get it relettered and everything. I think the next slide. This just shows a year over year. We are right on target for where we believe we should be. Next slide. For the third quarter 2025 in New Garden Township, we had 340 dispatches, 329 total transports out of all of our dispatches, and our total dispatches were 478. So, that's 478 of all municipalities that we go to, including mutual aid. Next slide. For the year, we're at 1,040 New Garden Township dispatches with 963 transports and a total dispatch of 1,459. That is a little bit ahead of past years. So, we're looking to possibly trend upwards of almost 2,000 calls. That's the EMS report. The big one on everyone's mind is Bowling Green is very much keeping us busy. I think we surpassed our total for last year already. So, last year's total was right around 380. We're at like 414 calls this year. So, we still have, you know, two and a half months left. They're keeping us busy. Fire calls, our busiest township remains is New Garden Township with 281 fire calls. Fire dispatches, Avenue Borough comes in next at 44, London Britton with 11, Franklin with eight, West Marlborough with 14, and we have 89 mutual aid. And the last slide. And then, this is, that's the total, sorry. And this is for the month. So, we had 85 in the month of New Garden, or 85 for the month in New Garden, 22 mutual aid, four in West Marlborough, four in Franklin, four in London Britton, 16 in Avenue Borough. Our most dispatched incident type was rescue and emergency medical services. So, that's either ambulance assist, EMS assist, yep, or auto accidents. Our next was false alarm, false calls, we had 39 of those. So, that's CO alarms, automatic alarms, anything in that nature. I think that would be about it. We do have a couple of things coming up. So, this weekend, we have a shred event done by Surf Pro and Avenue Fire Company. So, if you stop by, you have things to shred. We can, they have a big truck there, shred them, make a nice donation to the fire company. I don't think there's any chicken barbecue tickets left, but if by some chicken falls off the rack, you might be able to find some. That's also Saturday. That was generously donated by a lot of business owners. I think the only thing we had to really pay for was the chicken, so everything else was covered. We sold just about 600 tickets, which was 200 more than we expected. One of our members sold to mushroom growers about 400 tickets in like 36 hours. So, that's pretty cool. The merger committee, so the merger with West Grove, that is still progressing along. There's a meeting tonight with the Governance Administration Committee. They're going through bylaws and SOPs with West Grove members right now. We have another steering committee meeting on Thursday to keep going with our bylaws and seeing where this is going to kind of unravel. And then, the goal is by November 22nd to bring both memberships together and have a vote to move forward as one entity. So, as long as we keep getting everything together and all the bylaws and SOPs and operations are looking like they're good to go, hopefully, we have a successful vote on the 22nd.
Great, thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Yeah. Since the hospital's opened, have you noticed or charted any reductions?
So, are, yes.
Reductions in time, that is.
Let me, can I grab another piece of paper?
Yeah.
I'll give you times.
You knew I was going to ask that anyway.
I did, I brought it, I just didn't bring it up front.
So, while you're looking at that, Steve, I want to give you what our, what we came up with at Medic 94, which is a single advanced life support unit out of 350 calls last month. There was a reduction of approximately 20 minutes per call, roughly. So, that is times one. I know your crew with the ambulance is times two, but what that equates to is it's 90 extra man-hours per month. So, yours possibly.
It actually went up. So, we're right around 30, 30 minutes.
30 minutes.
Transport to dispatch, or dispatch to transport and dispatch to available went down by 30 minutes. We also noticed that we've taken about 40 of our transports to that hospital each month. The last two months it's been open. So, of 100 transports, 40 are going there. You know, 40% is a huge reduction in vehicle costs, fuel, the maintenance, just the man-hours, like you said. A lot of the patients that, from one of our facilities, you know, have been going there, and it's been, it's been a big change for us.
Yeah. And even when we have to go further out with going to Chester County, it appears the times are reduced a little bit, not significantly. You still have the travel time, but the wait time.
Yes. So, over the last two months, it's been down. I know the last two weeks has gone up pretty drastically because of flu season. We've had a couple of wait times where we've been up there for almost two hours, where they've been, we call it the wall time. So, they're standing at the wall with a patient in the stretcher for nearly two hours, waiting for a bed. I know a crew did it yesterday for an hour and a half, and it's just, that's kind of taxing, but it's fewer and far between.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Lieutenant.
Joe. Hello, everybody. If you don't know me, I'm Lieutenant Joe Versagley with the Southern Chester County Regional Police Department, and I'm just going to run through some of our third quarter stats here for you. Do I have the clicker? No. Oh, it's right. Okay, perfect. All right. So, can everybody hear me okay? So, for first quarter, New Garden, excuse me, for third quarter, New Garden Township. All right, thank you. All right. So, our, obviously, our biggest issue is thefts. That's kind of going to be a trend that we see going up. A lot of it's online related, so just be vigilant with your accounts, things like that. If it seems too good to be true, probably is. So, we're going to be seeing a lot of those, especially with AI. We anticipate it just getting easier for scammers to scam. Other than that, year-to-date down there, we're at 53 and 17 for all of our jurisdictions combined, which is tracking pretty well with the same time last year, but down just a little, so. Just want to go to the next one. Thank you. So, that was our Part 1 crimes. Part 1, our more serious crimes. Part 2's dropped down to the next tier with regard to how, you know, how serious they are. Again, frauds, that's a big one, again, mainly because of a lot of the online crimes, stuff that we're dealing with. They're for New Garden, I'm sorry, first line, first column there. 26, 26 for quarter 3, 89 year-to-date across all of our jurisdictions. We are down for this time last year, and year-to-date, we're down to, you know. So, that, that's always a good trend. With regard to our total calls for service, New Garden Township, year-to-date, we were at 2,062 total calls for service, with 682 of them being third quarter. As you can see, we're down just a little from this quarter last year, but up overall. Of course, alarms, a lot of our disturbances, traffic-related issues are going to be our biggest, of course, much like Steve said, assist EMS and fire calls are always high with 270. Suspicious conditions in domestics, they're always going to be tracking right around there. Again, for, we're down a little from last year with our total calls for service, but like I said, again, up, up year-to-date. For citations, warnings, DUI arrests, New Garden Township, we had 193, which I understand is down from last, this time last year. We are back up, fully staffed with our traffic safety unit. Our one officer, Officer Dave Madonna, was, just returned from Africa, from a National Guard deployment. So, we're back up to full staffing there. The DUIs, you'll see that are going down. I know I've said this before, but for those of you who weren't here, that's a national trend. That's a good thing. A lot of people are taking advantage of lifts and Ubers and making better decisions. So, nationally, DUIs are down. So, we're going to hopefully keep seeing our numbers drop there. 12 for quarter 3, as you could see, excuse me, year-to-date, we're at 36. As you could see, last year, we were already at 58 and 56 for the year before. So, that's always a great number to see dropping. As far as crashes are concerned, in New Garden Township, we had 13 reportable. Reportable are considered by PennDOT to be a little more serious because either someone had to go to the hospital or a vehicle was not drivable and required a tow. Non-reportables are basically your fender benders. Unfortunately, up on Cypress, we did have our one fatal motorcycle crash this year, this, this quarter. Our crashes, year-to-date, are down, which, again, always a trend you like to see going in that direction. That might have been it for that. Okay. Another question I know people had was regarding the traffic study that took place on Reynolds Road. So, what I have, I have the, the actual report that was generated by PFC Sullivan, based on that traffic. So, what, the date for that traffic study was August 25th, which was the first day of school, to September 26th. It was tracking westbound traffic on Reynolds Road. Westbound traffic is the traffic that is obviously going from Somerset area up towards the middle school. In that one-month time period, one direction, our little Reynolds Road saw 10,445 vehicles. Now, I will say, of all those vehicles, this is the first half of the study. We've changed directions now. He's recording eastbound for the same amount of time to see what the, if there's any difference there. But, I can happily report that of those 10,000 vehicles, 0% were of enforceable speeds. So, nobody was speeding to the point where they could have been written a citation. Of those vehicles, 99.95%, which is 10,440 vehicles, were going under 40 miles an hour. Five vehicles were between 41 and 45 miles per hour. And just to explain kind of how this instrument works, so it, there has to be a specific line of sight for the device itself. It has to have an appropriate pole that it can be fastened to, so we can't have any utilities going up that that could be disrupted by the straps or anything, conduit lines, things like that. So, and it also, it records your initial speed. So, people who are coming around the corner or whatever, as soon as that sign sees you, it records that speed. So, if you slam on your brakes afterwards, you don't get a break. It catches your, your fastest speed. So, other than that, our office coordinator, Ms. Maria Zavala, she's from Wilmington, Delaware. She started today. She is a bilingual young lady, which benefits us there in the front office. She was with Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and came to us with shining recommendations. She will be taking Berenice's spot in front office. And Bee's moved back to an administrative assistant position, accreditation manager. She still helps with court prep and all that. So, if you stop by the station and you see a different face, that's Ms. Zavala, so. Unless anybody has any questions for me? Sir? Yes, sir. Yes. Sure. And I, and I did want to, I did want to address that to the, the main issue, like I said, is there's only so many areas. It has to be within a certain distance from the speed limit sign, first off. Again, the instrument needs line of sight, and again, it has to be on an appropriate pole. I understand, yes, those numbers coming around that turn are going to be lower right now. Did anybody see the location of where the sign is now? It's actually, you're going to be getting the people that are coming directly off of Sunny Dell now, and will have time to get a little speed up there. So, again, PFC Sullivan wanted to conduct two, one in each direction. So, the first half, again, is this. I am as curious as you are to see what the next, the next test shows. So, as soon as we get those numbers, happy to report those as soon as we can. Hopefully, next, hopefully, the next meeting or, by the next meeting, we should absolutely have that information for you. Yeah. Yeah, sure, sure. Yeah. And, and like I said, PFC Sullivan understood that, but we still wanted to get kind of a whole, a whole idea of what was going on in each direction there, you know, especially coming toward the school. So, now, now we're going to be tracking it for the other side for you. On, on Reynolds going up toward it, I'm not sure. I can, Kenny, is that something that has, had been brought up? Okay. We can, we can just. Where the actual school zone is. Okay. So, I think that, yeah, I think, I think that'd be more of a, like I said, maybe a PennDOT regulation or however they do it, and yeah, so. I can, I can look more into that for you, but yeah, like Kenny said, I'm pretty sure that's probably what's going on there.
Any questions from the board for Lieutenant?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we're getting there. Yeah, guys are, that's definitely, that's definitely credit to the boots on the ground. They're, they're doing a fantastic job out there. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next item is the monthly department report for September. Chris?
Just in the interest of time, and I do know we have guests for tonight. So, the monthly manager report's in the packet, you know, nothing irregular in terms of month-over-month performance, in terms of just the status quo, still maintaining pretty strong numbers and inspections. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Chris. Moving on to new business, first item is the White Clay Point Development Update. Chris, any comments you had before we turn it over to Ray?
No, this is pretty much going to be turned over as an update from Stonewall.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good evening. Purpose of me being here, our team being here tonight, is we wanted to update you with regards to the plan, show you some of the changes that we've made. I want to introduce to you our retail development partner, as well as our home building partner, and then briefly talk about the next steps in the process. So, let me just. So, what we've done is we've, we've landed, as I presented the last time we were here, we've landed on a, on a combination of different product types. We have an attainable product type that we've, we've been discussing, which is a two-over-two unit. We have a townhouse unit. Again, that will be geared towards attainability. We'll have a villa, which is age-targeted product that we've discussed, and then, we'll have two different types of single-family detached housing. The big change that we. Sure. This is 41 here. This is 41 right here. Okay? Sure. Again, these are the single-family detached. These are the townhouses and the villas, and these are the stacked product. This area right here is the retail and the commercial area. What we've done is we've added a placeholder here. We're, we're in conversations currently with a medical office developer, who also develops long-term memory care type of a product. So, there might be a long-term rehabilitation type user here. We, we also, through our development partner, our retail development partner, who is Provco, by the way, I apologize, I didn't mention that. They're based out of the Villanova area, been in business over 50 years, primarily retail and commercial developer. We've, we've been in conversations with Sprouts Grocers, so that's, that's an ongoing conversation. We're very optimistic about that. And then, we've had some, we've also had some conversations with some quick-service restaurant-type folks. Have not really started to dive into it as much yet. Obviously, I've said previously that the retail will follow the residential. But we already have some interest there, so that's encouraging. I'd also like to introduce tonight our home building partner. It's Lennar. Bill Krieger from Lennar is here, who's going to introduce himself and talk briefly about Lennar.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Krieger. I am the Vice President of Land Acquisitions for Lennar in the Pennsylvania Delaware Division. We're a national home builder, we're across the entire country, but my specific area is in Pennsylvania and all of Delaware. We, like Ray says, we've partnered with Ray. We're in the process of going through due diligence right now. Can everybody hear me okay? Usually, the shortest guy in the room talks the loudest, so. So, we have partnered with Ray. We're in due diligence right now. We have proposed a variety of different home types. You'll see in your packet that we've got a 1,200 to 1,800 square foot stacked townhouse. This is the area that Ray is referring to as attainable. We believe the lower unit is a stacked townhouse, isn't attainable home. It'll be priced in the low to mid-3s, and then, the upper unit will be in the low 4s. We move across the street to a 24-foot-wide townhouse that is about 1,800 square feet, and that'll be over a basement, two-story over a basement. And that should be in the high 4s, low 5s. We have the 30-foot-wide, two-story townhouse that's over a basement. This has a master down, so it'll track that age-targeted that's looking to downsize a little bit with less, with less responsibilities with mowing their lawn and snow removal. And then, we've got the single families that'll range in that 40-foot-wide, anywhere from 2,500 to 3,500 square foot, and those will likely be in the mid-6s. Depending on options, could go all the way up into the 7s. But we're really trying to hit all of the different targeted consumer groups from the attainable all the way up to the move-up buyer. I can sit up here and talk all night, but if you guys have any questions, I'll be here. If anybody in the audience has any questions, I certainly can be here and hang out afterwards as well. Excuse me? Yeah, I'm going to, so the, so the, the last thing I want to talk about is the, the process that we're continuing to go through. So, two phases of the process. One is the amendment to the settlement agreement. The, the reason that we need to amend the settlement agreement is it would replace the 2007 concept plan that, that has been approved, primarily because the city sold their sewer system, so we have to address that. That's the agreement that we're working with, on with Aqua. There's updated stormwater management requirements, too, that weren't present, that, that weren't in existence when the original agreement was done. And then, the, the plan that we've, we've proposed actually has lesser traffic because there's less trips on residential communities. We're, our company's going to invest over $20 million in this project, primarily in the sewer upgrades. Again, those conversations with Aqua, they've asked for them to be kept confidential. I want to be respectful of that. Hopefully, we will be able to discuss that publicly here very. Hopefully, we will be able to discuss that publicly here very shortly. So that's the biggest cost associated with this. There's probably $5 to $7 million in traffic improvements that'll be required because of this project. So we will be required to do that. We've talked with staff and with you all about preservation of, of the barn structure and the rowan home. Obviously, the stormwater management in the New Garden Hills is going to be paramount to this project. We've had multiple conversations with the folks from Somerset Lakes. We need to help them address the runoff problems down there. So we're actively communicating with regards to the stormwater management. We know that it's, it's an existing issue as it, as it stands today. And then we've, we've, we've started having conversations, and actually, we were with Delegate Sappy today, going through the park and, and, and looking at improvements that we can help make within the park area. So we're actively discussing that with staff as well. So that, that really is the, the purpose of the amendment of the settlement agreement. Will, will basically allow us to pursue our concept plan. Then what we do is we go through the, the normal course of the land development process. So we've already submitted an application, and, and we are, we will be processing our engineering plans and resubmitting to the planning commission, probably within the next month to two months. So that's what the schedule looks like. Okay.
Oh, I was just saying, we want to just kind of scroll through the images of the.
Bill, do you want to do that? Yep.
Sure. There you go. Will the interchange is?
You're not down.
Real quick, so we don't get a little bit out of sequence here. You're asking about is the interchange on Route 7 and Line 41 changing? So the interchange.
So, so we, we have conducted a traffic study, we don't have the results of that back yet. But I will tell you that there, in the previous traffic studies, there were issues and concerns at that interchange. And we've actually been discussing that with, with the town staff as well. So yes, I believe there will be, there'll be improvements made there.
There would proposed, if you can remember.
So, so right here, yep.
So there's, there's three proposed entrances. This dates back to the township's original YSM master plan, where they looked at three entrances to that commissioned project for access into St. Anthony's, now New Garden Hills. It was Route 7, based off of the one that exists today, that you can go in to go into the Cayola Trail. Of course, they identified that through the White Clay Point development would be a secondary access, and then a Reynolds Road access to the rear part of the park. So this addresses all three. Well, essentially, it establishes two that don't exist today, in addition to the one we currently have, if that, that's a correction.
The original traffic study that was done was based on a, on a, I think, 400,000 square feet of retail. That generates more traffic on a per-trip basis than residential does. So we don't have our trips back yet, we should get that in the next week or so. That'll go to the staff, that'll go to the township, and then we'll figure out where all the mitigation has to take place. It has less than half of the retail of the last plan. Yes, sir, it has more residential. We've done an economic impact, and we've actually posted that on the website, if you want to view that. It's, it's, it's viewable to the public, so.
No, so if you remember, very early on, there was like a White Clay Point pad site, that's basically the developer is hosting and putting up all the impact studies. We can at least push out the website again for public review. It's just whiteclaypointpa.com or something like that. I'll put it up at the end of the meeting here. And what they're doing right now is as soon as the impact studies are provided and at least reviewed, they post them up there for public review. So you can go onto that site today, go onto the impact study and read the community impact study, which is about a 40-page document, and it details, I can't remember who the name of the group that did it off the top of my head right now. It's, it's sanctioned by the developer, and it just shows kind of what the net expected revenues, expenditures, net impact, direct investment, indirect investment into the community is. And so right now, just had a big takeaway, it plans for about sustained after the development is complete, about 1.4 million in additive revenues, and conservatively based off of two would be about 800,000 in total expenditures. So it would be a revenue positive to the township. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Somerset Lake directly bought us this project on Reynolds and Buttonwood. We have over 400 families that will be directly affected by whatever final thing happens. Has any thought been given to meeting with appropriate representatives from Somerset Lake to try to minimize the impact that this whole project is going to have on residents of Somerset Lake?
We've, Ryan, how many times have we communicated? We've met, we've met with the, and I apologize, I don't recall the name of the group. I want to say it's Somerset Lakes. Sorry, yeah, I apologize. And we've, we've had a couple of Zoom calls and conversations with them. We're putting them together with our engineer, so yes, there's a line of communication that's our.
That's only one of the concerns that residents will have. I mean, you know, we're naturally concerned about the water.
Sure.
But that's only one concern. There'll be other concerns, I'm sure.
If there's an HOA at Somerset Lakes, and we would love to sit and meet with them.
I think it would be helpful.
And we will absolutely do that.
Get input from the, from the people.
Yeah, sure.
Just want to make sure, if we're having public comments and questions, and none of this stuff is getting on the record, so none of this is being recorded. So if you're going to make a comment, I'm going to have to ask that somebody comes up or passes around the microphone, name, address, in order to be able to put it on there, just from a minutes perspective helps us out, thank you.
Stan Lukoff, 23 Reynolds Road. So my question to Ray and Stonewall is, is there any more thought about the access off Reynolds Road into the community? We talked in the past about possibly limiting access to, to the development from Reynolds Road.
We've been having conversation with staff about that. Our engineering team has been discussing it with staff, and, and we're going to go through the process of the planning commission, get input from them, and to, and then we're going to decide how it, it plays out there. So we want to go in front of the planning commission and get comment. Yes, yep.
Yeah, hi, Ray, Richard Gahl, Chester County Press. Just a quick question. In the previous plan that you submitted a month or so ago, you looked at a total of 620 residences. And in this particular plan, you had mentioned that the current plan has less than half of the retail that was proposed in the previous plan, but more residential. Do you have a figure that you could provide everyone in terms of how many residences are planned for this particular plan? Thank you.
I think it's 622 units, it's the exact same number of residential units. What I was referring to was the previous plan that pre-it had gotten approved.
The settlement plan, the 2007 settlement plan had less residential but more commercial.
Thanks, thanks for the clarification.
No problem.
Patty Bodie, Walnut Run Road, it's just, it's so many houses. And in 2007, were the 23 acres down along Reynolds Road in that plan? You know, right. So if you cut off, if you didn't include those 23 acres, you wouldn't have to come out on Reynolds Road, and you'd all come out on Sunnydale, correct? Are we at the stage where we're still trying to figure out how many houses? Or is it, this is how many houses are going? I don't quite understand. Usually, there's sort of a back and forth of how many houses you can do. No? Am I totally wrong?
I assume most developers have people who tell them how many houses they can have under the ordinance. And my assumption would be that this developer has decided that's the number that they can and want to build, so.
To build.
I, I don't know exactly that I understand your question.
Just to update too, and this is just part of it, and was the reason that was demonstrated to us, was this is permissible by the existing unified district development zoning.
You're going by, you're not going by the new zoning.
No, not by the new zoning, so that allows for.
2007 plan doesn't show all these down at the bottom, like your estate lots and whatever, correct?
No, so this parcel here, and if I can have the clicker at least to provide clarity to it, if I've got a question here. That's fine. And this is just what's been. Yep. It's, it's more than that. So technically, from here in this parcel line to the sign, it kind of looks like a block eye, if you will. This is the old tear holding property, which was a collective ownership. And it's what they ended up doing, it's 34.3 total acres. This was added into the 187 total acreage from the prior plan, which now creates that 220 acres. Now with that, you're talking about potentially, if you're carving out this, it's, you're talking about these homes here.
Yes.
That would be it, that would be the difference.
Right.
But overall, 220 acres within the construct of the existing unified district allows, by right, three units per acre for residential within a contiguous 80% gross tract area for residential. So this meets the zoning based off of today's zoning, not tomorrow's zoning today's. So that's why it's a function of the permissible for density within that legacy district that's been in place for decades from the township, more than that, as well as the fact that it's a big property. And that's why you think, so the number is the number based on.
Number is the number.
Objection and the.
If this goes through, the number is the number.
And that's always been the case.
Well, I feel like there's been other developments where it's, you know, going back and.
I don't know what people are doing, wheeling and dealing, but that's not my experience, yes.
If you want to, please come up and announce yourself and speak on the microphone, thank you. And if anybody else has comments, if you want to queue up here too, again, when you get to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Mark Ridinger, 210 Sunnydale. I just have a question that would go to the township. Based on this information here, I mean, that's high-density housing, and the township has its codes, its regulations. And I don't know if everybody knows where to look to see, you know, what these are, but we want to be sure that we're not wavering or giving away our regulations, our rights. If this density of housing is too high or too many, you know, we don't, you don't have to say yes. You have to say, well, we agreed to negotiate or make waivers. And that's still a decision that has to be made by the township.
They, I, the developer, any developer has to comply with the provisions of the zoning and subdivision ordinance. Zoning controls density, so there is only so dense, there's only so many lots per acre that are permitted under the zoning ordinance to be in this development. So that's not a waiverable situation, that's, that's exactly what the ordinance says. And I'm, I'm with you on that, we do not do that, yes. There are rules and you have to comply with it, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael Norris, 6 Copper Beach Court. My question is mainly about the Reynolds Road. Okay, so I've heard a lot of different comments from, from different people around the community with concerns about the traffic impact, especially on Reynolds Road. And I know at one of the township meetings, there was discussion about the, the road there that intersects right at the bend, about possibly making that a one-way street or something to kind of reduce the traffic. But the police officer reported that there were 10,445 cars on Reynolds Road in one month, without that huge number of added homes, which I think it's logical to probably assume that 41 that is already congested will probably become more congested as we add commercial and all these other aspects. So Reynolds Road is going to then become the cut-through to get to Delaware, or Newark, or Egypt, or any of these. So you mentioned that you had a traffic study coming. Does your traffic study only include 41 and 7? Or does it also include the impact on some of these other roads that are going to be impacted? And I think that goes to this gentleman's kind of concerns about Somerset Lake, which turns Buttonwood into the outlet.
Sorry, Ryan, you got to go.
Yeah, thanks.
So when a traffic study is conducted, the first thing you do is you do what's called a scoping study, where the traffic engineer meets with the applicable regulators involved, and they negotiate what gets involved in the traffic study. And I can tell you from experience that all of these municipalities, they want all of these troubled intersections to be studied. So the scope doesn't just study 41 Sunnydale and Reynolds. We go all the way up, miles away from our property to study these roads. And we take traffic counts, we do models on every single turning movement and every single aspect of this. And, you know, it's tough, I've been doing this a long time, and I understand no one likes to be stopped at a stop sign when there are four people in front of you, I get it. But 10,000 cars on Reynolds Road, right? That's an average of three cars, like, it's what, let's do the math, right? Is that three cars a minute? I mean, I'm sorry, an hour? I mean, it's not many when you actually look at the daylight hours.
Right, but I mean, if, if you look at the section of that community, okay, that attaches to that outlet right on that bend, which is somewhat of a blind corner to start with, I think it's going to be concerning, you know, to anyone who has to travel that. And then with the school being there, I believe the number of 400-plus homes was used. That's going to be at different times of the day, when everyone's child has to go to the middle school.
I would put it this way. We did not want that connection there. We were trying to assuage the township's desire to have a third connection from Reynolds Road into the park. If you want us to do away with that, let us know, we're happy to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Happy to do it.
I think, so I'm a candidate for Board of Supervisors, and I've been out canvassing, and this is one of the biggest concerns of anyone that lives anywhere adjacent to the, in the Somerset Meadows, Somerset Lake. This seems to be a huge worry. Reynolds Road.
We're willing to work with you.
Right, got it, got it. And we have to have the conversations, if we can't talk about it, then that's when we have the issues. Right.
So.
Gotcha.
But, but I will tell you, because I do want both, you know, the board and the planning commission and all of the people involved, for you to understand that we don't do these decisions willy-nilly with no thought involved. The reason that this connection point was used wasn't random. It was based on lots of study and hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering. There's wetlands here.
Yeah.
No, I, I think you would agree, especially given the issue Somerset Lake has with runoff and everything else, you don't want us tearing out wetlands.
Obviously.
Right? I'm pretty sure you don't want us putting in retaining walls all up and down this road. This was the only spot that we own that makes sense for a connection point into the backside of the park. So this portion down here near Somerset is completely backed by wetlands, right?
And you know that the other thing is, because I've looked at this a bunch of times on the website, little bit difficult, because you can't really blow it up. But the other thing I thought was, with the angle of that corner, that might be, have been the only logical choice where a person could pull out of there and see both directions.
It was.
And without having a blind corner immediately.
Exactly right.
I get that part, but my point to bring up is that the residents along that route are very concerned about that.
We have heard this. We have heard this.
In addition to that, while we're here, uh, there's a, there's a gentleman that lives at one forty-nine Reynolds Road who I invited to visit.
And um. I just want to make sure that your comments are actually getting into the microphone. You got to stand a little bit closer.
Um, his um, his issue is that uh, I'm not sure, I can't see well enough to, to, to point exactly where he comes out on this map. But he's had, he has a home that's been there since the seventies. He's not the owner since the seventies, but the way this lays out, he will have a house within seventy feet of the corner of his house and a walking trail within ten feet of his deck. And he's, he's really concerned because he's been there and he feels that he has a certain right to privacy and that people on a trail while he's grilling on his deck is probably not a comfortable thing. So my thing would be going forward, if we could really start to look at some of these things. Um, I realize you guys have to have a certain density to make the project work. I get all that, the business side of it. But the other thing is, I feel like there's a lot of um, upset in that community over there, just regarding, this is a big change. This is a rural area. And when you add this level of density to it, it represents a big change to how people are going to live. And you know, like I said, it's, it's a, it's a very um, tight walk to make everybody happy. But if you would just be kind of able to review the plans and just be aware of these situations, maybe when you see those things that are close, go visit those people.
We've spoken with that owner.
Okay.
His, his house is built, I believe, ten feet from the property line and we have a buffer yard.
So that goes to an issue of how did that ever happen? Because the setbacks are more than that.
Exactly.
So. Good, good. But he's upset. Understand that. Right, understand. Well, I appreciate that. We appreciate that. And so then you said, when you do get that traffic study back, the comprehensive one that will go on the site with the other studies is, I mean.
It'll go in there the same day.
Okay.
We're going to send it to the township. The township's engineer will get it. It'll be on the website.
Fantastic, thank you.
Good evening. Troy Ray, two twenty-five Reynolds Road. My question to the developers are, how are you going to protect the private wells that are along Reynolds Road? It doesn't matter. You've got six hundred and sixty units sitting right up there. Each is going to have a lawn. Each is going to be dumping chemicals and et cetera onto it. I'm the blank spot right down near the base of Reynolds Road. How are you going to protect my well? My well is three hundred and thirty feet deep. Contamination from the exhaust of fourteen hundred cars, the contamination from nitrogen fertilizers being used by people, pesticides, et cetera. I do not have access to public water. I have my well and that's it. And as a matter of fact, the other gentleman that's up on one forty-nine Reynolds Road also has a private well. So as again, I ask you, how are you going to protect our wells? It's not an answer. If I all of a sudden start getting nitrogen into my water system, what do I do? Do I just call you and you'll gladly come and dig me a new well?
Do you want to be hooked up to public water and sewer?
No, I have a well. I do not pay public sewage. I do not pay for public water. I do not want to pay for it. Now, if you want to hook me up, you want to pay my bills for the rest of my life?
I'm not prepared to tell you exactly how we're going to deal with pesticides and, and so on and so forth, other than to tell you that we have to abide by stormwater management quality and quantity. I, the development is responsible for contamination if there's groundwater contamination, yes?
Well, that would depend on the source. And I, I understand your concern and maybe this is a better private conversation because it.
No, it's not.
Okay.
It directly affects what's going on up there. You're proposing six hundred plus units to go up there. Six hundred plus units means six hundred plus lawns, which means six hundred plus people mowing their lawns, which means six hundred plus lawn services going into there and dumping everything imaginable in there and it runs all downhill.
Okay, I understand that. Um, what I would say to you is the zoning ordinance permits that density. And if you're concerned and you can identify someone who's polluted your well, then obviously you would have a cause of action against that entity or that.
No, it won't unless the township orders them to take my water quality first. And then comes back later, if I start to have a problem, then I have the records to prove that, oh yeah, by the way, it's not my fault.
Well, I think you can get your own water tested, sir. I'd certainly recommend that you do that. You can do that. You can keep the record.
Township could actually ask them to do it and require them to do it so that it's on public record, so that we know that the wells that are there have a certain level of nitrogen in it. And that as this development goes in, as the nitrogen levels go up, we then can have an action against the developer.
I'm, you're speaking of actions against the developer for something that hasn't happened yet? And we can only do what the law allows us to do in terms of regulation. I understand your concern, sir. You've expressed it really well, um, but I, I kind of think they've answered you to the best of their ability.
They're not going to do anything.
Well, that might be the answer that you get.
Well, and then what do I do? I come back to this esteemed body and say, oh gee, I have a problem now? Then what are you going to do? You're going to say the same thing to me. You're going to say, well, that's not my problem. And I will bring up this conversation and I will say, well, by the way, I did ask you to force them to test the wells in the area for specific.
And I, I understand that you ask that, sir. The Chester County Department of Health deals with wells in Chester County, not the township. And so perhaps what you should do is contact the Chester County Department of Health to ask them. And I really think this issue is probably, I understand it's not closed for you, but it seems to me that you have expressed your concern very well and they have expressed their response.
Would also like to put for the record that the last time the developers came by, you actually did require them to do this.
Well, that's a good, if that's the case, I wasn't here for that. That's a very good point and I'll make sure it's included if that was, if that was required before.
I, I want to agree with Troy. I think there was a baseline study that was required in the two thousand seven for.
If that's the case, then certainly, that's, that has to be done then.
Four houses.
On it, I know of two, Steve, so that's just.
Yeah.
But.
The only thing I can say in, in being transparent is if it gets contaminated, contaminated, they're going to say tie into city water, period.
Yep. Thank you.
We're, we're get like filtration. I mean, we're on.
Or, or, or water treatment, filtration, yes.
I'm Ken Robertson, three twenty-nine Buttonwood Road, Somerset Lake. This question is for Ray Jackson.
Sure.
Who currently owns the lane where the eight proposed estate lots are?
Terra Holdings.
Who?
Terra Holdings.
Terra Holdings?
Yes, sir.
Who previously owned the land?
I don't know. Do you know, Ryan? Do not know that.
Okay. So S T?
T E R R A, Terra Holdings.
Okay, and for the township.
Yeah, in nineteen nineteen eighty-nine, it was owned by a law group. Prior to that, it was deeded to Edward and Evelyn. I'm going to butcher this one, I'll spell it. G E H R E T. And they retained it from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay.
So apparently the law group is still part of Terra Holdings, so that was the previous owner. All of these are public record. You can go on Chesapeake Views and get them.
Okay, so my question is to the township, township now. Do you really need the eight estate house confronting Somerset Lake on Buttonwood Road, Reynolds Road? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Frank Flitty. I'm in Southampton Parish Road. And I have some questions for, for Ray. The roads within the development, are they going to be public or private roads?
Private.
They will be private roads, okay. Uh, another question I had was the stacked homes that you have, those are multi-family homes?
Yeah, yes, they are.
They are?
Yes.
So uh, when you have the count of six hundred and twenty homes, is that counted twice or is that still just counted once?
No, it's included, the total volume is included in that six hundred. Still a portion down at the bottom.
I don't know the numbers. So that's, that's, that's not my question.
It's six hundred and twenty-two residents.
Is it going to be two residents for, you're, you're counting it as one.
That's right.
One dwelling, but there's really two resident families.
We're counting it twice. It's six hundred and twenty-two total residents.
Okay, total residents, not just total homes.
Right.
Okay.
Sir, if you think of it like a hundred and eighteen units.
Right.
The structures would be fifty-nine structures, thank you.
Right, right, exactly.
Right, that's right, that's right. Yes, sir.
Okay, got it, got it. And the other thing was, uh, approximately how long do you think the building of the development is going to take place? Roughly.
So from all approvals.
Six years. I mean, once you start construction.
Once we start construction of the site work, we expected it to be about a year's worth of site work.
Okay.
And then we expect it to be about five to six years of total build out. That could fluctuate based on the market. We expect from all approvals, having the ability to stick a shovel in the ground.
Right.
It probably would take six to seven, maybe even eight years before it fully.
So it would be a year before you even put the first house in?
Well, we have.
Proxy, yes.
It would take us about a year to do all the land development.
Right, right. Okay, so the reason I ask that question is, I know in your July presentation, you had mentioned about the stormwater runoff and that you were going to take some, some really good measures to improve the quality of that, of that stormwater runoff. But my question is, is that work only going to be done at the completion of the project? In other words, all during construction, do we still have to worry about stormwater runoff into our lake not being treated?
Uh, one of the first things that they do is they put in erosion element controls. That'll be the very first thing that happens.
Got it. Okay, thanks, Guy.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, just to clarification, I just wanted to make sure, um, just to, this, this is crucial. So Ray, you told me a little while ago that you're looking to continue to have six hundred and twenty-two. I want to make sure this is clear. R E S I D E N T S, not residences.
Residential units, residential units.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Barkley Hoops, past township supervisor. I've listened to similar discussions when I was on this board and I was here in two thousand seven when the plan was approved. And uh, I'm listening, I'm trying to maintain quality of life in this township. Have you be able to do improvements. And everybody have a win-win when I'm sitting back there listening.
Your only access to Reynolds Road was for emergency service. There was a big road and, and gate. Now I'm looking. If this were to be cul-de-sac, this were to be eliminated from in the park, you say you got three ways in. So don't come off around this road. Come off seven or four one. Forget this part, right here. Seems like it reduces residences. The community's concerned about the number of residences. And I know in this area, it's zone where you can have a tremendous number of units, by right. Is that possible to eliminate this? But you're going to have access to here. There's no use of people coming all of a sudden, coming through. And I have been around the community, past supervisors, understanding the residents of Somerset. The cut through traffic, their quality of life, their value home. If this were to be eliminated, I mean, it would be a lot more competitive through township, especially here. I don't see why this can't be eliminated. It's impossible. And you should come out.
I think the first call Ryan makes when he leaves here is going to be to the engineer to talk about that. I think that's been discussed and I, we, we're, we're going to work. No, we heard you and we agree with you. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
So Stan Lukoff again, two eighty-three Reynolds Road. My question is to Bill from Lennar. So, so Bill, I was looking on the website and I was trying to see if I could find anything around energy specs for the homes that you're proposing. And my main concern and focus, um, I'm not sure if you're aware of the forward fly issue. Have you heard that term?
I have not, no.
Okay, okay. So forward flies are a issue in the township with the mushroom growers and it's being addressed. And there are solutions, however, the, the way they're getting into homes, and this can be very disconcerting for a lot of people that have these issues, is they're getting in through cracks. You know, basically openings in the house, bad seals. And my question is, do you have any sense of um, anything that will be done to help remediate that from the front end and not the back end, so that the homeowners will be assured of a very tight and energy efficient house?
I can tell you that the homes built today are significantly tighter than they were a year ago, two years ago, five years ago. We do blower tests, door, blower tests on all the homes to meet certain energy ratings.
Okay.
Uh, we do advertise certain energy star ratings depending on which packages purchased. But they are built significantly tighter today than they were.
Do you know, for example, what the ACH is for those homes?
I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not a.
Could you get me in touch with, uh, who would know that from your company?
I can't, yes.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Alan Andrade and I live in Somerset Lake. This isn't so much a question as a comment. My career was spent in law enforcement in New York City Police Department. So I always think of things in terms of the impact that it's going to have on emergency services. And one thing I can tell you is that response time is critical in any kind of an emergency. So with the addition of over six hundred families, it seems to me that this is going to be a possible adverse effect on the existing police, fire, uh, ambulance services that we have in the township. And that it's only going to increase the need to, to have more police, fire, ambulance, et cetera, to meet the expanded families that'll be there.
Yes, sir.
Was there any questions from the board for Ray or his team?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-ups. Uh, Ray, would, would, would you be okay with doing a baseline study? They're, they're claiming it, the two homes, I think in, in the original.
We're going to do that.
Okay, and, and again, that would just mean nitrate.
We're going to do that.
Thank you. Um, and then on the stormwater, you are going to comply with the Chester County Stormwater Ordinance, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have.
Just make sure you say that into the microphone.
Patrick Coons, five three seven Egypt Run Road.
Uh, my parcel. Three parcels up in the top here.
Okay.
On Egypt Run Road. That would, that would be an entrance that lines up with Egypt Run Road, if I'm looking at that correctly. Yeah.
We got the school, we got the church, I brother was in the dirt. Now I'm a hybrid. He goes to the teaching, the church.
And the school buses.
I pay him my grant. Every two seconds. All right, second question. Can't hear you. Second question. I'm speaking about a lot. Second question. Is, where are you getting the resources for all this? Uh, water, sewage, I mean, water, sewage, I mean, how's this all happening? I don't, I don't get it, guys. I mean, you're, you're turning a, a very quiet, beautiful area into a... I don't know what that is down there, I'm late to the party, but... Yes, sir. Yeah. What is that, and what's that over there, the other side? I mean, what are you doing to us here? Somerset Lake, all this beautiful area around here is gonna be congested with all this? I, I, I protest. I protest.
Uh, hey, guys, how you doing? Uh, my name is Mike Mangini, I live on, uh, Broad Run Road, Lower Basin. Um, my big question is, I have an eight-year-old and a four-year-old. And as it stands right now, they are currently building a new elementary school. Our middle school's already pretty taxed, the high school's pretty taxed in terms of resources. Now we're gonna bring in 600-plus dwellings, and how many more children? How, how is the current school infrastructure gonna stay supported in terms of all of these new influx of families, which I assume is what, a big part of what you're targeting?
Yeah. So I can actually answer that one. I've had a good conference with Mark Tracy, he's the CFO for Kennet Consolidated School District. So as soon as this came forward in July, we basically passed this through to look at not just the units, but the potential bedrooms per unit, which goes into a, it's a, they're a group that looks at it in terms of total yield of student age count. So the total overall student age count expected from this development, because different unit types create different school-aged children. Uh, so their estimate from, this is from schools, was 404 kids, and that was based off of the very initial segue discussion about 600. I think at the time, it was roughly about 80 homes, that's been whittled down to 614. So it would be less than 400 kids. This is also in a time when enrollment has gone down by about 350 to 400 kids over the course of the last seven years in the Kennet Consolidated School District. So it's a common misconception that they're building the New Garden Elementary School just because they need more room for more kids coming online. It's more of the fact that they're replacing a 70-year capital asset for New Garden Elementary, so they're just building it to a larger function. But of course, that will be built with less and less and less kids coming from New Garden Township, uh, as well as the other surrounding municipalities that are in the Kennet Consolidated School District, which is the borough and the Kennet Township. So, their words, not mine, that they can actually absorb this without having a tangible impact to the school systems. And that's because of declining school age counts. And if you need to go ahead and talk to Kennet Consolidated School District, Mark Tracy knows about the project as well.
I'll take your word on it. I, I just, I don't possibly foresee how this many homes is going to be beneficial for this area. I mean, it's, again, it's already overrun that, you know, 41 Sunnydale Road area, and now we're just adding all these new homes. Big concerns. Um, talking about traffic impacts and things, again, broader, I live in Broad Run Road, right at the Buttonwood and Broad Run Road intersection. It's already home to tons of through traffic. Um, I get it, it's part of life. But, I mean, again, my school-aged children have been almost hit by vehicles on the Buttonwood Road, and they've tried to address that issue. People continue to just to blow through stop signs. I, I, I just, I can't foresee, even if we cut off access to Reynolds Road over there, so that they can't go there. My, I foresee so much traffic in all other directions, that people will still continue to cut through Somerset, and that's a big concern. So... And then I will be honest, I, first time here, I'm curious from this esteemed panel here, how many of you are in support of this development? I mean, I'll just leave it at that.
Hi, Dina Marie Vanover, I live on Walnut One Road. I just wanted to make a comment about the school district. So the new schools do have enough room for the incoming residents. But when you talk about Kennet Middle and Kennet High School, that has not been accounted for. I also don't know if you guys realize, the school district can raise taxes up to four and a half percent with no approval by the residents. On top of that, you do get the benefit of taxpayers, but when you look at our budget, which you guys are gonna be presenting very shortly, I went through that with a fine-tooth comb. I worked at JP Morgan Chase myself with budgets. Um, so the biggest increases come from fire and police. There is no way, in the way you routed out that five-year budget, that it has all the expenses that you're gonna need for fire and police yet. This water and the sewer, you guys are putting in, I heard, up to $20 million, that does not cover all the costs for the water and sewer. I do not have city water or, or sewer here. I have well, um, and so I don't have to worry about it. I have my own septic tank. But I am concerned for the township, because Kennet Township had a problem with another community that was built, where they did not have the infrastructure. The student, the, the residents of that, um, red, uh, community had to pay the higher cost, they increased the sewer fees. And so I think that it is not a fair statement to say that you know that we will be revenue positive. Or the total impact to the community on all of the increases. 13% increase from Chester County, 4.5% increase from the school board, and now whatever happens here. We will not be able to have people that will afford things in this community if we continue to not think more broadly. I know that each of you only take care of pieces, but if you are a resident in this community and you want to be informed, you need to attend all these meetings, and you can see how big the impact is. I don't understand why the local governments are not working together. I don't know why they're thinking, not thinking about the big picture on the taxes, but a lot more has to be thought about here. That has not all been thought through, and even to make the comment that the traffic is less. That plan in 2007 didn't have nearly as many people or residences in this area at the time. You have, there were 80 residences on the 2007 plan. Yes, a much bigger, bigger commercial. But when you're talking about 622 residences, can you really put on that slide lower traffic requirements just because of the commercial piece? It just doesn't make sense to me. And I, I would love to know again, not from Chris, but from the Board of Supervisors, how do you plan to tell the community about how are we gonna afford all these things? There's no jobs in the area, where it's, the, the people living here are growing old, people are not moving here because there's nowhere to work. The school board, by the way, we're having a lower number of people, because there are also kids that can't be supported in the school board. My son himself, he has to go to a school that the school district has to pay for. We don't even have all those costs in there. I would just love to understand how each of these Board of Supervisors, how you guys are looking at this, and feel good about it.
Uh, Tom Sunderland, 149 Reynolds. The, everybody keeps talking about blocking off Reynolds, but just curious for everybody that's in here, if you were living in there, would you come out even if Reynolds is closed off? Come out at the top on the Sunnydale and turn left instead of going right into 41? Right? Well, if you're going south into Delaware, you'd cut right through... Hey, you go Sunnydale to the... Okay, well, but to seven, like if you were heading down seven, okay? Because I always go down Reynolds, I mean, I live on Reynolds, so I go down Reynolds and cut through, so I was just curious, like...
What, I don't know, what's, what is the question? Yep. Yep. Depends on where you're going. Then, I'm gonna be a smartass. Depends on where your GPS takes you.
I always go down Reynolds, whenever I go to Delaware.
Yeah.
Coming up, going to, to 41, and then going down, and then hitting seven.
I think the impact...
Yeah.
Right, so you would go through Somerset to get to seven? Does Newark go to seven?
Yeah, and take, take Newark Road all the way to, uh, Route 7. If, if I go to Hokeston from Landenburg?
Yeah.
I go Newark Road, all the way, take Valley Road, commit landtana square. I do not cut through Somerset Lake.
No, that's good, because that's what I was curious about.
And, and if I'm going to 48 and 41 to go south to Wilmington?
Yeah.
I just go out Sunnydale and go down 41.
Okay, cool.
Basically, but I, I see your point.
That's it, because I always just go, like, if I'm heading to Hokeston, I'll go through Somerset. Um, so that's why I was just curious, if most people would still do that? So this way, locking off Reynolds is still not gonna stop anything? That's all my thought was.
You'd go up, make a left and a left, and be at the same place.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is...
Last one. Yes.
Hi, Jeremy Abelson, Broad Run Road. We talked around the roads, but I've been to a couple of the meetings, and I'm really still not sure what you are proposing for the actual road improvements on 41. And especially the dangerous intersection at Sunnydale and 41.
That'll be part of the traffic mitigation study, so when the, so we just don't have it back yet. We can generally speak that there'll be a, there'll be a, a signalized intersection, there'll be expanded ingress and egress and excellent. Hopefully this week. Yeah.
Signalized, both.
Uh, yes.
It's not, what, this is not what we want, right? So, the scope it comes from the municipality, county entities to our traffic engineer. They model it, they have a process to which they determine which intersections pass, which don't. I can tell you that from the baseline study, the Sunnydale intersection did fail the left turn movement from 41 to Sunnydale. As everyone in your committee tested, they left her. So it made sense.
There's already existing conditions that are, that are failing.
I want everyone to understand the great means that people go to, because it's not magic. They take the existing counts, they do it, they model the entire system. Then they go to the, uh, various parties and ask, what is the future development, not just ours? But everything else they have in the future, whether it has a real chance of being developed or not, we have to account for it. But that perspective traffic, along with our own perspective traffic, which is also based on tables, which are done from actual real-life examples, where they've tried to determine how many trips are generated from each housing type, each retail type, each commercial type. They put all of that into their model, they find all of the intersections that are now failing. And then they go about the process of trying to figure out how each of those individual intersections can be improved. Whether it's, wow, there's a queuing problem, the left turn movement here, we need to add dedicated left turn. Do we have enough right of way there? Yes, we do, we're running at 150 feet, so now we can set 15 cars there, and people will no longer be stuck behind 15 cars that are waiting to make a left turn. They can drive around on the dedicated left lane. That is the work that's done. We don't do it, we don't negotiate with them to do it, they don't negotiate with us for it. Traffic engineer determines it, for 41 in particular, it's governed by state highway. They negotiate with state highway to say, these are our results, do you agree? And state highway will sometimes come back with their engineers and say, you know what, I disagree with some of these assumptions that went into this model. And they'll go back and forth, and what they try and come up with is something that they agree, uh, passes all of the intersections. We can't produce a plan that's approved without intersections passed. Do they pass to where you'll never be stopped, that will be behind someone and get mad at us for it? Probably not.
Well, man, enough now.
We can solve all of those problems, but it's a very rigorous process. It's been put in place for well over a decade, we follow it, and we're trying to make it transparent to you by putting on websites, you're free to read the 300-page report for yourself when it comes out.
Thank you. Yeah, we do appreciate it. Good thing.
All right, again, Patrick Coons, 537 Egypt Run Road. Uh, it's, it's not so much of a question, more of a request. Um, I'm wondering why we're, we're not kept, um, aware of, of the steps that are being taken as residents that are impacted immediately by this project. I don't get a flyer in my mailbox, I don't get anything that tells me what's going on, and what your plans are. Can I request some sort of update, you know, or a way that I can be updated weekly, daily, monthly?
Correct, so, right now, the township primarily does all digital-based communications, because it's very easy for us to kind of just put it out there and alter over a different kind of channel. So we really encourage people, if you want to maintain awareness about township issues, it's very easy to subscribe. If you want to give me your information, I can take it and work with our staff members to give you all the things that you want to receive notifications to. And of course, at the end of the day, uh, can we do flyers, but it would just be based off of what the planned distribution of materials, and how heightened a much do you want people's awareness of this outside of the normal notifications that we provide for that?
At least a five-mile radius of people that are greatly impacted.
Yeah. And that's, like I said, that's a, that's a policy-type decision, that's not required for it, so it would just be based off of what the board says that we wouldn't have notified this many people.
I hope that you do keep informed.
Yeah, so if you can just leave like a, a, an email or something that to contact you with, we can take care of that.
And by the way, I mean, yeah, that, that's a beautiful area, it should be a preserve. Put some trails in there, you know, give the animals a place to live.
Richard?
Thanks.
Um, so my, my last question is simply this, what's the next step? What's the next step for Stonewall Capital? What's the next step for the township and the board?
We're gonna formally submit this back into the planning commission, as I said. So we're gonna work through the, the amendment to the settlement agreement, so the, the proffers that we've, we've acknowledged. We have to work through the agreement with Aqua, still, for the sewer. Um, but we're gonna be going through the, the, the standard land development process in the township.
That being said, are you still looking, uh, I think it was the last presentation, Ray, that you gave here, um, you said that if all of these uh, layers go well, um, that you could conceivably put a shovel in the ground beginning in the first quarter of next year? Is that pretty much still where you're looking at, or?
No, I never said that. It, it's gonna take us a year just to go through the engineering and the approvals.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and then it'll be a year developing the site, so, you know, vertical construction, realistically, two years from now.
Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying that. Thank you, Richard. Moving on, we're gonna move to the next agenda item, it's the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. So the board's gonna consider to advertise the fiscal 2026 proposed budget. Is there any commentary there?
Hey, Mr. Reggie, how you doing?
Hey, Mr. Dungy, how you doing? Okay, I think that thinned out the crowd. We're going to go ahead and get into, because I got about a forty-slide deck to get through. So, and fun stuff here for the FY twenty-six budget. Um, so we'll go ahead and, uh, oh. We're going to go ahead and proceed on with the next agenda item. I would just ask if you congregate in the hall, if you want to close the doors, because noise does resonate back near into the, uh, the room. Thank you. All right. Uh, so everyone's next favorite subject, the FY twenty-six proposed budget. Uh, of course, uh, obviously, first and foremost, good evening, County Manager Chris Heims. Uh, good evening, members of the board, residents and staff. Uh, and of course, this didn't come out of, uh, thin air. Uh, this has been part of a longer process. All of these workshops have been public meetings. Uh, they were advertised on the, uh, the township's social media and channels. Of course, all of the previous meetings that we have have been recorded, they are available on our website. And if you're also just curious about what's going on in township financial documentation, it's also in our financial document section within our actual township website as well. Uh, so everything here over the course of the last several years has always been kind of accrued and aggregated onto that one splash side as well. And at the end of the meeting, as Mr. Dungy proposed, I can actually pull that stuff up so people know where to get the material. Uh, so with this, it's been kind of part of a longer process. We kind of piecemeal, kind of went through sections of the township budget until ultimately we get to tonight, which, uh, for those unfamiliar in Pennsylvania, if you're to a point where you want to approve your budget, you can't just do it haphazardly in the moment. You have to motion to make a thirty-day review period in order to advertise your budget. And then with that, after that thirty-day, you can actually adopt it. Uh, so tonight, if all kind of things being, uh, kind of inputs from the, um, the commentary for after the presentation, uh, it would be a proposed for a motion advertised for thirty days. We wouldn't be approving anything tonight. Uh, all right, we'll go ahead and into it. Uh, so one thing that we started with, when in terms of recommending to the board, uh, for the beginning of twenty-four, was starting to interject some priorities in terms of goals and outcomes. And of course, how that may or may not segue into establishment of different funding priorities. Maybe we move up some funding in this area if we can achieve it. Uh, whether or not we move funding back down, because we did need it from prior years. And essentially that goes with like alignment with your comprehensive plan. You do your in-year goals and then of course you do your, how do we measure ourselves against achieving those in-year goals? Are they layover goals into the following fiscal year? All of this is part of a longer cycle with multiple, multiple inputs. It's not just looking at your line items and making a decision in the moment of what you're going to concentrate on. Uh, so with that, at a high level, uh, it always starts and stops with strong financial management. Uh, this was one where we came into, uh, we'll call it a, a, a net deficit position starting in the FY twenty-four plating cycle about the summer of twenty-three. And with that, township staff kind of went back to the well and we started configuring our budget to best, uh, uh, operationalize township, uh, general fund in terms of how we're going to portion out funding for certain departments, as well as the need to infuse additive capacity in other departments in terms of need to better leverage our open space fund in order to fund that as a priority for the township. And of course, we have that sewer sale balance of remaining funds available uh, based off of that twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one sale. That's of course still in a collective principal balance that's being actively invested, which is returning on revenues, which actually goes in right now for the most part to fund capital. So this isn't just a general fund review, this is kind of how everything kind of feeds into off of each other as well. Uh, another one, it was part of discussion tonight, but just in terms of economic development, this was a recognized priority, uh, in order to infuse, uh, some additive initiatives in terms of what else can be done kind of collectively. It's why the pursuit for the zoning map and update, uh, not just from an economic development, but just a need to revitalize or refurbish a lot of the existing ordinance based off of a holistic amount of issues, many of which a lot of those details are in the overall zoning ordinance project website. Uh, as well as, uh, activation of continuing development projects. Uh, of course, we have the one that we talked about tonight, uh, to a lesser degree. For people who aren't familiar, up on Bancroft Road, there is a ninety-eight-unit townhouse development up there, up by the Bancroft Elementary School. And of course, Thompson property, it's a little bit lagging behind because it's a different type of development. I always forget if it's fifty-one or forty-seven units of a kind of estate-type style homes built there off of Thompson Road in Hillendale. Uh, so those are in progress, or at least inactive in terms of the land development process. Another one as a critical priority that people, uh, on the board were recognizing was the infrastructure investments. Uh, so we have, uh, uh, I'll kind of highlight the paving portion of it. Uh, historically, really infused some additive funding in order to address critical paving areas of need. Uh, the township had some very poor areas, if you will. You can probably, no stretch of the imagination, that the initial projects for Star, uh, Pemberton Road, Hillendale Road, some of the other ones that were kind of not necessarily needing resurfaced, but meaning like a full depth of repair and replacement, uh, were kind of the top of mind ones, so those were highlighted. As well as just the overall paving program and sequencing and funding, uh, based off of our bi-annual paving study. Uh, so motherware, uh, to kind of address for infrastructure investments is number one, the completion of our Act two oh nine study. So now we not only know, uh, where we want to potentially, uh, uh, address in terms of intersections and pain points, that was through the Act two oh nine process as well. And of course, now we can start figuring out, now that we know what the price points are for that in terms of township developer or PennDOT-specific, uh, uh, contributions, assuming, uh, share of the cost. Now we have to figure out a way to implement that plan. That's, that's going to be for future plans. We need to have the conversations first, so there's no additive transportation funding planning for the FY twenty-six budget. We need to start with getting a sense of how to programmatically build a transportation plan in place for a capital improvement program. And then for, uh, stormwater portions of it, uh, you know, we still have a kind of a significant lag now for being able to holistically address the, the litany of stormwater issues in the township. Uh, the one thing we were able to address for this year, uh, was we were able to implement our MS four, uh, best management practices project up at the golf course. So if you've been up by Church Road, you'll see that on the old Lochner Golf Course, now Smedley Preserve Facility that the township bought as an open space project. There is a roughly one-mile-long sediment reduction project that's being implemented, completed there as well. And that's of course to meet our MS four permit requirement per DEP. Uh, address the rising cost of public safety services, so a hundred percent on board with understanding that that's a huge issue, because, uh, every year is the way that the, uh, direction for emergency services has been going. It's kind of twofold for your police. It's just for any township or municipality that funds police, it's predominantly your number one expense. It's going to take up a lot of the room in your general fund budget. And with that, understanding that it is a collectively bargained group. So of course, it's one where the cost of rising cost for policing services is just a function of we're doing through another set of negotiations to update our CBA with our local police union. Uh, for emergency services, it was always one for the fire and EMS side, one where you just have, I mean, we can talk about that all night. But just in terms of a lot of the issues, uh, plaguing fire EMS services based off of their funding model, uh, based off of the volunteerism rates to kind of plummeting for them and having to replace with professional paid staff. That's kind of the biggest issue for them is kind of a replacement rate of formerly volunteers, now professionally made staffed in order to maintain the same level of service. Uh, and of course, that's increased costs across the board. And that's not just a uniquely New Garden issue, just ask our friends in the Kennet, East Marble, Kennet Square, as well as all of the jurisdictions now to the west of us, everyone's facing the same issue simultaneously. Steve News brought it up earlier, but we did have successful discussions last summer. And so the goal is to re-merge Avondale and West Grove Fire Companies, that's what he was alluding to. Uh, so it's one where primarily his, what, the last five years, about twenty-one? Uh, Avondale Fire Company had both, um, uh, uh, London Grove and New Garden Township collectively funding it. Uh, London Grove left that relationship and went to West Grove. And this is now just kind of pulling in the whole West Grove Fire Company with Avondale Fire Company. Wholesaling fire and EMS service costs is attempted to essentially make a more sustainable growth plan moving forward. Uh, which is why we're also able to potentially project lower year-over-year cost increases just to address the one lady's concerns. Uh, but with that, moving on to the final priorities, uh, I don't want to go into a larger kind of word salad here, uh, other than the fact, and we'll talk about it later, but, uh, we do have a goal to continue to implement the Smedley Preserve, Preserve Master Plan. Uh, that's one where we've actually successfully already gotten one grant already to do the Church Road improvements. And then we're waiting for results on a Department of Community and Economic Development state grant with no local match for about one-point-two million dollars to continue to build out that property. So that's not coming out of your capital fund with taxpayer payments coming from property taxes, that's coming from the open space fund. And we'll go more in detail about that as well. Uh, and then really, uh, these are part of the, um, kind of individualized, uh, elements. They're kind of, you know, not as top of mind, but still out there. Uh, the township still has the, uh, proposal to do the continued growth or lead supportive service for a new garden flying field for the airport. Of course, we own the property up there just north of the airfield, kind of below the Polo Facility and north of the airfield, uh, as well as just overall improvements for energy efficiency. We have our silver status still as a Pennsylvania Sustainable Community. And it's just, what else can we do to infuse some other goals in there? All right, so I'll go ahead and start with the general fund review. Uh, and this is one where there's a lot of people kind of coming in at different on-ramps into just the historical performance of the township. Uh, it's the one where we continually update this slide. Uh, but the way to think about it is of the course of the mid-two thousand and ten's, it was about essentially the, uh, the initial foray into investing into regionalizing our policing services. That kind of happened right around the mid, uh, decade mark there, around twenty sixteen. The intermunicipal agreement went into effect. We merged, uh, West Grove Borough and New Garden Township Police Departments into the overall Southern Chester County Regional Police. Uh, that was kind of initially a, a increase overall, just as an expense, because you're funding a larger police apparatus there, as well as the investment from a capital facilities perspective, because you built the police facility, of which proceeds of the sewer sale went into paying off, uh, the actual principal balance of the loan for the construction loan to build the police department in the first place. So the township kind of went heavy into investing into growth and regionalization of the police department. Uh, but with that, when you do that and you also start building out incremental cost increases for fire and you start adding in some just latency for emergency service kind of funding, and also you have a lot of kind of interfund transfers, what ended up happening from a budget perspective is, is you went from a kind of a, a net surplus into a net deficit. Uh, so what we ended up looking at during the twenty-four timeframe was how long had that net planned deficit kind of been in place as a structural use of cash? You'll see that from a general fund line item perspective. And then with that, what needed to be done to make sure you weren't having planned deficits moving forward, with the understanding to actually invest into certain other areas as well, primarily in these measures here. And then of course, leading to the incremental increase year-over-year between twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, so I can answer more questions about this. It's, uh, one where all the last few budget planning cycles have kind of illuminated, highlighted kind of the history of the township. Uh, but it's one where, uh, essentially if you think about it, it's been infusion of investment into your police, your township staff to include Town Hall and Public Works officials for more community life development, community development, life safety functions, as well as your Southern Chester County Regional Police. This is just more of a, uh, future-facing, uh, revenues over expenditures. And it's in one in Pennsylvania that if you're not touching your property tax rate, your goal is to kind of keep that flat and you can fund things with the scalability of your earned income tax revenues. That projects your ability to grow over time with expenditures, should they arise. Uh, and that's not saying you're just going to plan to kind of bump up your revenue or expenditures just to match it. It's just one where that is that general separation over time. And eventual in Pennsylvania for second-class townships is you have one scalable revenue and you have kind of one consistently flat revenue until you increase the tax rate. Uh, we do have a planned increase for this year, you can see a little bit of spike. And the reason for that is because we're taking FY twenty-four prior surplus, because we had a large, the elementary school project, we got a significant amount of permit revenue. Um, and then we just had a planned surplus that we had essentially were using for twenty-six, twenty-seven as essentially a structured use of rollover cash, not from our general fund reserve cash. Uh, but based off of the updates we're coming into twenty-six, we didn't need that cash. That's a good thing, you're not using cash reserves to fund operations. So instead, we're going to take this and we're going to transfer it back into our capital fund. We're investing in where the one-time non-recurring dollar should go, which is, it's going to go back into your infrastructure. It's going to go into your streets, it's going to go into your capacity for equipment purchases for your public works department. Areas where you would want to have that facilitation for your planned expenditures. Uh, this is one where also if you're looking at revenues over time and you will see a kind of a net waning of it, it's because while you do have two small communities come online, which is Bancroft and Thompson, uh, it's not going to solve all your problems, because at the end of the day, at a three-point-two-seven tax mileage rate and a one percent, which fifty percent shared with schools for earned income tax, you know, you'll grow a little bit, but not at the same pace rate for just projected kind of, we'll call them average CPI increases over the course of the next few years. And of course, from those developments, you're going to get one-time revenues that come from permits as well as transfer taxes, but those are non-recurring. You won't see transfer taxes year-over-year continue to go up, it's just at that point of sale for that property. So while it does show a trend down, you can see in the interim, because earned income tax and property tax aren't all revenue, they're a portion of it, uh, you'll see some planned expenditure increase. These are those kind of net plan for EIT increases, uh, as well as we're going to project three-and-a-half percent year-over-year growth for earned income tax. And that's based off of kind of this kind of trend in this direction as well. So I'm very trend line oriented when you look at historicals and look at that year-over-year growth. Now that does kind of fly a little bit outside of some of the other narratives, which is that back at some point, the township's demographics will have some of our net earners go into retirement status. And this is kind of a large gray area for us right now, because if you have an older community and people aren't increasing their wages, or you have younger people moving in with earned income tax payments, at some point, if you stay static as a community, those will eventually go down, because more people will push into retirement. So this doesn't solve for that as well, it's just a projection based off of historicals, if that makes sense. So essentially what you could see is this start to go down or at least plateau a little bit. And of course, what does this all mean for future planning? And that's always the big question, how do we set ourselves up to understand how we can we flatten our expenditures as being, trying to be the best fiscal stewards while still meeting our needs? Funding emergency services, funding township operations, funding capital replacements, while also making sure that we're not stressing all of our tax base in either one direction? Can we maintain within that scalability of our means? Uh, so with that, uh, we do have to project kind of an average CPI increase. So that's one where that's just based off of standards. Uh, it's also one where the fire company merger plan, uh, there's essentially no funding model identified for today. So we don't know, based off within the next six months or seven months, is it going to be under the same pretense of the existing funding model? Could the funding model change? You don't really know at this point. Uh, could they establish a different model in order to fund fire services through, let's say, like a fire district? These are all being discussed as options amongst those particular people involved with that process. But it's one where it's kind of a larger kind of gray area as well. Uh, but with that, that isn't to say that we are doing our own part to stretch out and lean out our budget. The biggest one was just making sure that we're leveraging the open space fund to its fullest capacity. Between twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three, uh, the township purchased two large open space properties at the St. Anthony's in the Hills, now New Garden Hills, and then also with, um, uh, the, uh, the Lochner Golf Course Facility, now Smedley Preserve. So that's four hundred additional acres of township-owned properties that we own and maintain. And also with the understanding that the goal was to implement master plans to make those public amenities. So now you get access to them as well. Of course, that's going to increase somewhat to your operating costs. So we're basically shifting that operating cost to the open space fund and out of the general fund. Uh, like I said, we did use our leveraged surplus cash from FY twenty-four. We increased our fees for our permits and inspections with our community development department. So we're now kind of maintaining more of a market rate more so than rather than just kind of going off of what we previously had. And of course, that helped increase permit revenues. Increase of permit revenues is good, because it also, also decreases, uh, the need to raise revenues from other sources, primarily with taxes. Uh, we've been utilizing our shifting around for our investment strategy to the maximum extent possible to fund the most priority area of need. Um, and then of course, it was the closing of the historically accrued deficit that was accrued over that twenty-fourteen to roughly twenty-twenty-three-ish, twenty-four timeframe. Uh, so all that to say that this has been what the township was focused on historically. And then of course, we have to talk about the, uh, the inevitability of potentially not succeeding with growth. So if you don't, you're going to have to basically figure out where to plug in that revenue need first. So we do have that interest income generated from the sewer fund as the most immediately available level of cash uh, that can be infused into the general fund at the need to not increase taxes. Uh, granted, although that's a non-sustainable revenue, you don't want to plan in order to use, uh, we'll call them, uh, uh, projectable rates that macroeconomically kind of trending in the wrong direction right now in terms of the availability of interest income from there. Uh, you have to reduce your capital expenditures, so think of it like the body when it gets cold. If it gets to the extremities, you start pulling yourself in. So some of those extremity-based things are going to have to come in and you won't be able to do as much infrastructure replacement. So a road program would have to be pared down. Uh, and then of course, tax rates and service cuts as well. So those are all kind of likely outcomes if you don't have the ability to maintain scalable revenues to fund kind of your revenues over expenditures. Uh, so with that, you know, right now the plan is to continually monitor and then projected year-over-year outlook, understanding your long-term risks while trying to make sure you're mitigating your short terms as well. Uh, so where are we at for FY, uh, year-to-date? Uh, so we do have, uh, some plan kind of, uh, above for revenues and below for revenues in terms of increases and decreases. Uh, so we did have transfer taxes, which, if you think of earned income tax, local services tax and transfer taxes, they kind of roll into this Act five-eleven taxes. So the net increase was about two-hundred-and-fifty above, that's a good thing, that's a planned surplus from a revenue perspective. Uh, so what the kind of primary factor was is it just continued to have stronger performance. We did conservatively project revenues, uh, kind of be flat year-over-year, more so than projecting them up. Uh, but now that they're kind of establishing more of a kind of this is year-over-year trend, uh, we corrected that for FY twenty-six. Uh, but with that, that does create, uh, somewhat of a surplus. Uh, we've also previously had discussions about some, uh, adjustments for individual escrows and interest income coming in. Uh, but of course I've actually come on board and we've collected those revenues as well. So they're no longer seen as a net drawdown of revenues as well, which is a good thing. Cause that'll only increase your planned year end surplus. Uh, then expenditures wise, um, engineering escrow from land development. Uh, so we have the two developments going on. So this is just more of a lag of development. But think of it like if you're receiving escrows from having to review, uh, uh, from your engineers. That's the developer giving you money to review their plans. It's a pass through fund. So it's kind of one for one. Uh, then of course decreases, this is a good thing. Uh, so with the ability to have more, um, uh, permitting functions performed by township staff. We ever actually lessen our overall building inspection services. We use a third party provider for all residential and commercial inspections in the township. Um, and then just, uh, overall what we will look at for this planned surplus for this year, based off of everything projecting out. Would be kind of fund your biggest need for cash on hand, which right now was our capital fund. Uh, it's been kind of a community sentiment that we want to continue to improve our roads. And that's where this would go into in order to get stronger paving outcomes and road repairs in the township. Uh, is one of the top identified needs in the community survey. So that's what this would be for. Uh, so FY 26, uh, so where are we at? So we had to basically look at what the priorities were for what we might have as a, uh, uh, need. To continue year over year increases for your fire and police services. Uh, so fire came along with a net increase that originally was around 200 and I think it was like 60 or 70,000. Uh, we're able to work with them in order to get identified need for 211.2 thousand dollars. And of course, that's the fund shifts for EMS. So user people who are available to stop on an apparatus to keep your response times high. And Steve's in the back there. He can answer any questions if you have that about specifics. Uh, we also added a patrol officer based off a recommendation from the Southern Chester County Regional Police Department. Uh, as well as just that year annual step jump. So if you have a four year CBA agreement, uh, this is just step one. FY 23 was year one, step two, 24, it's just that jump in that agreement over time. And that's part of, uh, collective bargaining negotiations that's performed by the Public Safety Commission with the Southern Chester County Regional Police. CBA Union as well. Correct. It's part of the regional. So that's a split cost. Um, yep. Uh, the only other thing was in terms of added, uh, revenues was essentially taking a planned remnant amount of two years of surplus. Squeezing them down to one kind of lump pass through. And then taking this and you'll see it as an expenditure increase transfers out. We're basically going to infuse this into our capital plan. Cause right now our capital plan is primarily based off of available cash. We're not doing a debt management strategy. We're doing a cash based strategy. And of course infusion of cash as early as possible. Make sure that when you have kind of a butterfly effect of pass through funds for that, and we'll go to the model here in a second. Allows you to keep your, uh, your cash on hand to make sure you're not pushing yourself into a tight position. Uh, because we have a way to do that from our, um, our plan here for primarily funding our paving program. Uh, we're also to, um, uh, uh, continue our use of 25%. Uh, use of open space fund balance. That's a continued practice. Uh, so what's not included in the budget overall is, is, is we're still pretty insufficient. Township wide in terms of replacement of stormwater assets. These are culverts, uh, other kind of identified areas of need. Um, and of course we get a lot of, uh, complaints about that as well township wide of just. If you see something backing up, you won't be able to kind of do a full replacement of it. And we have a lot of old aging infrastructure in the township in regards to stormwater culverts. Uh, and then as well as a need in the future, if you want to continue with your stronger position on infrastructure planning. Um, at some point you're going to need to increase your transfers to reserve position. Now this is somewhat mitigated by doing some now today. So this need actually won't be as much as it might be in the future. But it's still out there as like a future projected, um, revenue requirement for the township. So the big board here, so all that's to say, and that's a lot of information. But with that, based off of planning, based off of projected revenues for next year, as well as projecting all of our expenditures. Is we're able to kind of fund this primarily with a large cash balance here to get to about a 9.1 million dollar budget. So it started about 8.6, but since you infused that one time cash. Uh, it would jump up to about 9.1 and then jump back down to about 8.7 for, uh, 2027. Uh, but with that, you know, we wouldn't have a planned tax rate increase of this year based off of the ability to fund revenues and expenditures. And of course you can see here in the variance in terms of just what's actually changing, everything that we previously identified on this slide. Going into understanding kind of where our revenues come from. So act 511 taxes, this is from your earned income tax, transfer tax, local service tax, and to a much lesser degree, your amusement tax. Uh, but with that, just understanding kind of how these perform over time. Think of this as kind of like a workforce type tax. You come in, you go into township, you pay 52 bucks a year. Have your transfer taxes, which is a half a percent on net proceeds of sales. So it's a 2% transfer tax in terms of how much you pay the state, the school and the township. State gets 1%, township and schools share that half percent. And then earned income tax, which is we get a full 1% of earned income tax revenue. For those who are working here, coming from other Pennsylvania localities that don't have an earned income tax. Or if you work in Maryland or any other kind of regional states that don't have an earned income tax. Otherwise, if you're a base resident, this earned income tax is actually shared with schools. So we only get half of your earned income tax. This is just for the general fund. There is a portion of earned income tax that sits on top of that 1%. That's primarily for your open space, uh, fund as well. So it's point 125% on top of the one. And that goes solely for the purpose of putting revenue into an open space fund account. For the purpose of acquiring and purchasing properties for the sake of preservation and conservation. Uh, otherwise we apportion out our revenues based off of not just what we have as a baseline. But just that proportional share for understanding how much is going towards fire tax. Because legacy wise, it's second class township in Pennsylvania. You do have the ability to set aside mileage rates for fire funding specifically. In this case it'd be fire EMS. And of course, when you look at the slicing of the pie for expenditures, it's still one where if you had to take kind of like a what is I'm looking at here? Public safety, transfers, compliance. So we are still heavily leveraged and understanding that we are investing as a need to continue out. Uh, have strong public safety services, include police and fire as well as Southern Chester County EMS, which is your ALS EMS provider. Your community development and safety department. These are your inspectors, your code enforcement officials. These are people going on to properties and having those dialogue about enforcement of property maintenance standards or doing rental inspections. And then of course your public works department, they manage all highways and streets. These are the people not only doing your day in, day out work orders, but also doing the project work to replace infrastructure. And then the larger part in terms of transfers out is primarily about right now, which is that spike for the momentary increase to put money towards your capital fund. And then normally this will be kind of washed out. So we usually have about a 70 30 split because of transfers out or about 65 35, if that makes sense. All right. Going into the capital improvement fund. Uh, so this is where we're talking about that throughput of cash in terms of what we're identifying as areas of need to invest. To do just replacements of infrastructure as well as replacements of equipment capacity. Uh, we're talking about stormwater. We're talking about, um, just our overall fleet and facilities for building improvements. We had to do the roof last year, uh, just a lot of things that just kind of come through your capital improvement fund. But at the end of the day, if you want to think about it, 81% of your capital fund is primarily for paving. Uh, this is an added liquid fuels revenue that comes in from the state. So that's obviously oriented towards paving. Uh, equipment purchasing capacity, we have these large assets that we need to replace. All your dump trucks, all the things that go into helping support your public works department, get the job done. And then of course, a very nominal amount, this was for one identified stormwater project, which is, um, I forgot the name of it already off the top of my head. It'll come back to me. What's the one off of the, uh, three? Uh, the other one. Bro, Wilkinson, thank you. The Wilkinson pipe. Otherwise, you know, the rest of the 19% is really about how much you're investing into your, your, like I said, your fleet, your facilities. Your administrative kind of overhead in terms of technology replacements, things we want to do to get become a faster, leaner and more efficient organization. Uh, but with that, of course, it needs a funding strategy to do this in order to make it sustainable. Um, so with that, right now we have our use of interest income coming from that 22.1 million principal balance from the sewer sale. And of course, the use of that becomes less and less and less beneficial to the township. Because right now, I mean, they had a rate cut in the few months ago, or I think it was even less than that. That lowers the ability to scale revenues or keep revenues consistent from that balance. When I first got to the township in 23, it was roughly about five points, almost six or seven percent. So it's already still projecting down and continuing to go down. Uh, now with that. You take your capital cash stack, you add in those in year revenues. This is of course from 25, so we need to look at 26. Of course, that's where then fusion of capital, um, transfer coming from the, uh, rollover surplus from 24. And of course, this kind of goes into your cash stack, your cash usage, your cash remaining. And then you replenish with interest to make it the next year's number, rinse and repeat, based off of the numbers identified here. Now with that, we've always identified the need to increase the revenue in order to keep it sustainable and consistent. Cause at the end of the day, the goal is to keep your capital fund as primarily an infrastructure, uh, focused fund. Uh, so that's what this strategy does as well as at some point you're going to want to replenish your capital balance. You want to make sure that your reserve position is still in a strong position as well. So part of your capital expenditure will be putting money into your reserve account as well. Uh, and of course we're able to achieve this, you know, by FY 29 goal from a couple of years from now. In order to make it show that we're funding our capital needs while also replenishing our reserves. Uh, so quickly going over the enterprise funds here, and this should be pretty quick here. The not too much more to go over. Uh, open space fund, uh, I don't know how much people are interested in the open space fund overall. But just know that we still actively have a restricted fund for open space dollars in order to preserve properties. Uh, everything in green has been structurally preserved for some sort of conservation fee, simple purchase agricultural easement. As well as the blue properties identified by the open space review board as potential opportunities that they see as worthwhile. In order to complete that township objective of having roughly about, uh, 23% preserved property in the township. And they've done a very good job over the course of the last several decades of implementing this vision. And of course, part of that is with a trails initiative to have public access into open space property. As a value add to the township and its residents as part of an overall wellness campaign. As well as making sure, uh, that we're making that everything in the township isn't seen as a, a, a carte blanche, you know, kind of. Development only kind of mindset. It's going to be a balance between the two. Uh, but one thing to also understand is the township does have a finite level of properties in the township. And of course, if you achieve this vision for the overall 23%, which we only have eight to go, uh, so we're on our way there. You would have some sort of agricultural and I say commercial, I mean, kind of ag related industry function. Which encapsulates roughly 26% of our township today. And then if you achieve this vision, you'd have about 23% of preserved properties. So to say that we're going to lose our kind of net aesthetic and vibe as a township. Uh, it'd be one where you would already have nearly 50% of the township already consumed by those users all already. Uh, so this is kind of the blend of what is new garden. We're kind of semi preserved, semi active with residential. We have commercial, we have a little bit of everything. Priorities wise, uh, if you haven't been to an open space review board meeting, this is kind of their manifest destiny. In terms of establishment of the Greenways Trails Plan, which of course kind of dovetails into you're preserving these properties to implement your trails map. That's kind of a large part of it. So think of it like having backyard connections with trails, kind of going through with different types of trail types. Uh, this map is the, um, the official map. And so you can get more details on that. But this hasn't gone away. This has always been part of the open space priority of the township. So it's just kind of making sure people understand where this is all coming from. Uh, you can read through this if you want to, but it's just kind of overviewing what type of purchase types are for land acquisitions. Uh, we've pretty much done every single one of them over the course of the last 20 years since the open space referendum was approved in New Garden in 20, 2005, excuse me. And of course we've been using it kind of a blended outcome, which is more recently making sure that. That revenue comes in, which roughly averages between now 550 to 600,000 dollars a year going into our open space fund. A portion of that to fund open space maintenance and implementation of project initiatives. So it's not all coming from general fund revenues. So with that, if you were able to participate in any of this medley preserve master planning, this was of course in the kind of mid 23, going into early 24 timeframe. Uh, they established an initiative to implement this medley preserve, which is roughly about 110 ish acres, if you will. Of property there for the golf course. And it basically to keep it that kind of passive open space walking preserve, if you will. Of course, that does come with some infusion of public access because you have to have a parking structure, get people on the site there. Um, as well as, uh, gateways to get into the pathway there. And then of course, kind of improvements along church road as well, which is a state owned road. Uh, but with that, we are successful at already getting a $300,000 grant, local match. The local match being 100% funded by open space dollars. So it's not coming out of the general fund. Uh, with the pending 1 million LSA grant, which has no match, we're supposed to hear that. But of course, DCD is very, uh, uh, reputable for delaying or deferring their awards. Uh, so we wouldn't expect that maybe until the end of November now. They were supposed to post it and originally in September, October, and they, they pushed it already. Uh, as well as another matching grant for a greenways transit. Essentially just think of this as the ability for the township to stack grant revenues as well as its local match revenues. In order to complete kind of the primary objective to implement the park. Now with that, you also now have this updated revised New Garden Hills master plan, which just adds to the deck. Of park planning initiatives that the township has. And of course, where are you getting this revenue? Cause at least over the course of the last year or so, we've been able to build this into a plan, if you will, that we could execute. Granted it'll take time because you need grants coming from the state to get it done. This one's coming in and sequence with that now. And of course, this one will have to find an alternative amount, which is why they mentioned it tonight. The township trying to seek, uh, uh, the developers contributions to add to that revenue. Uh, as well as we're going to look at, um, uh, seeking private, uh, uh, investment into the old pool area and some of the, um, kind of structures on the property. Uh, to repurpose those to kind of match a public amenity for a park. Um, and then of course, uh, any other kind of stacked revenues that already exist in our recreation fund that we have, which is a, a static fund of about 200 some odd thousand dollars. Uh, so this is overall where you can think of kind of the, uh, the throughput of revenues coming in. Expenditures for the in year, which includes the township's portion to fund maintenance and personnel for management of open space properties. And of course, what that means in terms of a cash strategy that allows for. The capacity for us to use 25% of the fund balance, which right now is about 2.7 proposed. The amount of expenditures coming through there from a maintenance operations and implementation for project standpoint. You have other expenditures because the open space review board works with consultants and stuff to kind of identify properties and appraise them. And then of course, the availability for in year funds for acquisitions as well. Uh, so if you don't use this, this fund kind of goes in and builds into this number, so on and so forth. Uh, and it's kind of the conversation and dialogue with the open space review board, just to kind of identify properties that. Don't particularly exceed this amount because then that would lower your next year's fund balance. In which case your percentage of utility out of that would go down. Uh, and that was implemented last year. Uh, for the airport fund, for those unfamiliar, the airport has and operates as an enterprise utility-esque kind of fund. It doesn't receive revenues from the township. It operates separately based off of its ability to provide services to a base level of aircraft at the airport. And of course, historically, these are kind of the details. I can summarize them. But at the end of the day, they've been able to improve their site primarily with federal and state money. With a small local match being provided aggregately over time with airport revenues. Uh, of course we did have some updates because the goal was to keep the level of runway counts high. So in order to manage the flight school program to make sure that that happens, because they're about 50% of the runway counts. And then just seeing other things that we can add to it. Uh, and of course with that, you have other programs and events you can do for stronger community events. Of course, the airshow from the end of August was highly successful. I think it had about 8,000 people that were there. And it was obviously well marketed and it kind of went viral and a couple of different things. And so, uh, I don't think the, uh, the weather hurt as well as the fact that we're able to finally go back and host it. On a weekend rather than a weekday was helpful as well to avoid, uh, presidential TFRs in the area from prior years. Uh, but theirs is very simple. Uh, they basically do rentals. So those are their hangers. Airport fees, you're thinking about, um, uh, uh, sales of gas, sales of, um, uh, maintenance services. Uh, those types that would go into, uh, sales for flight school. And then with that, their kind of department structures to manage that. So they actually do have a planned surplus coming in next year, about 118,000 dollars. We kind of manage that with, uh, revenue needs based off of fees for service. And of course, airport capital, this is one where you can kind of see, and it'd be nice if the township had the same kind of construct with a larger entity that basically charges five or 10%. Uh, but they're able to facilitate larger project funding through the use of Pennsylvania Bureau of Aviation Funds. So we actually get left on the total about less than 6% of total overall cost for the capital purchasing there. So that's very helpful, uh, because if you have stronger facilities and you have stronger usage, which keeps your airport viable. Uh, these are just some remnant funds. So of course, if you've heard of the hydrant tax, this is based off of eligibility of properties that can be assessed out of a hydrant fee. And this pays the Chester water bill as well, but no planned changes for the hydrant tax. And then of course, we do keep some remnant funds for sewer funds just in case in terms of something needs to be studied. If there's an act 537 planning update, anything, but we don't have any planned usage of cash. This is just placated funds into those accounts. Uh, so net funds where we're at, this is always very helpful. Um, because there is a lot of different funds. It's not just general fund and capital fund. But there's a whole stack of funds including an infusion of a larger level of a sewer sale, uh, balance as well. So we're still in a very strong net overall cash position as a township. Of course, the portion of this being restricted for airport and other things means that out of the 35, you would take the. out of the 35, you would take the roughly about, what is that, just under, over 7 million plus the 22 million. So you have about 29 million in terms of like liquidifiable cash, but by no means are we in a weak position overall. It was mostly about revenues. That's always been the discussion over time, because you don't want to use this as just kind of a placement of, in lieu of revenues by using your cash on hand. That's not a recommended cash strategy as well. So overall, for the proposal for next year, you can see we're kind of over a year, kind of spending roughly about the same. This is your net position, so that's why the budget recommendation would be, if you approve the budget, would be for net fund position about $4.6 million, $14.6 million. And that's about the, I think that's the end of the last slide there. So a lot to digest. Of course, it's been chunked over, kind of incrementally over all the workshops, so to get through it tonight, to get to Q and A, people have questions, which I'm sure people will, wanted to save time for that as well. So without any further ado.
Chris, can you just reiterate what the impact of the 2026 budget is on the 2026 tax rate for the residents?
No impact. It'll still be 3.27 plan for next year.
Great.
So no increase.
Any other questions from the board?
I see we have a satisfied customer.
I have one question.
Don't you want?
It's sort of, public safety always is a big expense, and one of the things that I've seen in this graph time after time is 30% of the calls to the fire department are false alarms. That must have some cost, I would think. And the question is, what do you do about that? How do you reduce that as a cost?
Well, there's a statute.
Do you want to cover that one?
Yeah.
There have been thoughts about this. I'll just let you know.
There's a statute that makes it a misdemeanor if you intentionally set off a false alarm, so it's a crime to do that. But municipalities can, most of the false alarms, as I understand it, and that's not my profession, come from automatic system.
I'm sorry, it pays for itself, is that what you're saying? I can't?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that there is the crime for someone who intentionally does that, but then...
I understand, but a false alarm can be something like a wire going haywire an alarm?
It can be.
Someone setting it off?
I can tell you, I can tell you that they've reduced, not significantly, since we've gotten a fire marshal, but we are certainly trying to address that because it does not only tie up the resources, it costs money.
Yeah. It just looked like a, I would like to see an exploration when he has these quarterly reports of why 30%? And what do you do to reduce it to some neutral level?
Well, there's the possibility of adopting it to create a violation.
We have that.
Yeah, so we just don't enforce it.
Thank you, Steve.
Correct.
For commercial, for false alarms, all right?
I think a big thing would be of the 30%, if you could explain how much is split between residential and commercial, and what the issue for residential is. That's probably the bigger one.
That would be something I have to get back on your board.
I think it'd be worthwhile. If it's 30%, that was the largest single category, false alarms. It would be something I appreciate an exploration as to how you reduce that and why they would continue to occur at that sort of level, seem counterintuitive to me.
That's a very tough one, because it's determined by the residents. It could be somebody's cooking. They set off steam from the shower, so that's kind of out of our control.
Well, but you should record.
Yeah.
So we do record that, it's just recorded as a false alarm.
More people have more integrated homes that have automated triggers, that kind of thing, so it will be a continued increase. I think the overall issue that you might be referring to is the overall funding formula that goes into designating what is your next year's expense. So part of the funding formula is past year's calls for service. So if you think about it, if you have something that's just increasing your calls, and you're going, hey, you had more calls last year, but part of them are these kind of like things that you can adjudicate and maybe tamper down, but it's kind of like a tail wagging the dog type situation as well, which is why we're also looking at really replacing the funding, kind of what it looks like in terms of the funding formula overall for the area. Because right now, it's based off of population count, calls for service. There's a lot of different algorithms. Yes, property values, you name it.
Want me to clarify the whole thing?
Oh, yeah, you can do it.
Since it's in my department, I'll clarify it. So the township did act and put in, into play. If there's two false alarms within a 12-month cycle, it's $25. For every false alarm after that, it is $515. And we are planning to increase that next year, just because of habitual abusers. To give you an exact number of what that is, I would have to dig through the data a little bit, but I can tell you, it has been significant.
Does $515 the estimate of what it costs the fire company to go out and?
That's the township, has nothing to do with the fire company. That's coming out of the fire code.
And that's the international fire code, correct, Robert?
Right now, and it's fluid, because you have to think about it, it's a treasury management function. So right now, the intact principal balance is always in a state of being invested, because right now, we don't use any of that cash. The goal is to keep that nut uncracked, because right now, it's producing revenues that we need. And right now, we have rolling maturities on a 270-day cycle roughly, so we can get kind of like a, kind of a multi-investment in a single year. I have talked to our pligged advisor. At some point, my question to him is always, when does it not make sense to do this? When does it make sense to go towards a longer, stable investment yield? Because you just, I'm constantly asking questions and probing him for other kind of recommendations. But still, by far and away, even with lessening interest rates, it's still the best overall usage of that to create revenue. And what we do is we take that cut, and then we move that to a separate treasury account, and then that's what's used to pour it into our capital account as well. So the principal stays intact, you raise the revenues off of that, you push it to a side in another fund, and then you use that to push towards that. So it's kind of like a treasury and accounting function. Yeah, so interest income is generally, but we have multiple little buckets of interest income. Far and away, the largest one in terms of a percentage balance is in your capital fund. That's why you'll see it at the very top of the list. Sorry about that.
I have a question, a couple of questions on the budget. So is an 11% increase typical year-over-year?
It's actually been higher in the last few years because we had.
What was the year-over-year?
I don't get that year-over-year.
Okay. I think that would be great if you could, in the history, when you do that, show that. Couple of questions, is management, administration, and finance, are they all people?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to kind of segue into that one, the overall budget, if you stack police, you stack fire, in terms of the portion of the fire budget that support personnel, as well as township personnel, this not inclusive of airport, is 67% is your payroll-based budget. That includes wages, compensation from salaries and benefits, which is pretty much indicative of any kind of municipal organization function. The largest part of your expense is going to be payroll expense.
The fire and the police is, it is a township requirement to pay towards those services.
It's actually not.
It is not at all. You do not have to pay. I thought in Pennsylvania, you're required as a township to pay towards fire and police.
So we are one of five jurisdictions in the entire Route 1 corridor southbound that has a police department.
No, I understand that, but isn't it a requirement because the state does not provide all the police that you need in your area? Like each township has to fund some sort of resources for police and fire.
That's not true.
Not yet. So how do they get funded outside of that? You just have no police and fire in the state? But you would have to pay it in some way, shape, or form to have the services.
If you have a state police budget contract, if you have a state police contract, you as a municipality pay $0 per year.
Okay. So then on the management, administration, and finance, those are specific resources to the township that sit in this building?
Yep, that's essentially, we have three personnel in our finance department. We have our director who does all investment and treasury management, as well as HR. We have an ARAP manager who also facilitates grant management. And then we have our staff accountants, because from a financial management perspective, you need to have your treasurer slash finance director be able to QA your accountant's work. It's kind of an internal function as well.
And so are all the expenses in those three line items headcount and benefits?
Yes. I mean, there is some small nominal overhead, we have to pay for our audit. We do have, for across the board, nominal funds for continuing education certifications, because if you're a member of the GFOA organization, I'm in the International State Management Association, you have to pay for that as well, very similar to like a teacher construct.
Yep. So the question I have is, why is it not allocated in the same way? So when you look at fire, you look at police, right, you have that section as that's what you pay for. But when you break out management, administration, and finance, so it could be a little confusing to...
Yeah, it's just to provide more context, so it's not just.
I just think it would be helpful, since that's one of the biggest expenses on here, if you take the three together, management, finance, and administration, plus the fire and the police, that's largest. It would be great if you could make it super clear that we're talking about salaries and benefits, that's mostly what those are for.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying? And then the second question I have is, the transfers out is the biggest increase for 2026. What are they? What are transfers out? I don't, I don't understand what.
Yeah, so from a line item, it's a transfer to your capital fund. So all that goes to your capital reserve position based off of the need to continue to have a strong starting position for cash to pay for capital.
So that is...
It's a one-line item push to your capital reserve fund.
So what you're saying there is, these are not, it's being taken out of your expenditures?
No.
No.
It was surplus from prior years. We were actually at the behest of not increasing tax rates needed more. We were using surplus revenue from an in-year project that was the schools project, which gave us over, almost $300,000 or something worth of revenue, as well as the, I can't remember where we got the additive surplus from that year, it's been a few years now. It plus up to be about $800,000. So we took that $800,000 and we sliced it in three buckets. And that was basically to not have to increase taxes more. It was kind of like a, like a soft landing in order to get to a more sustainable revenue stream for other things, which was coming from stronger permit revenue, stronger fees for service, stronger other things. So it was kind of like a, like a temporary solution to keep tax rates as low as they possibly could be.
So when you look at this portion of the budget, it's not a negative?
No.
That you're doing this? So I think again, that would be a great clarity, because when you look at that and you see 185% increase?
Yeah.
You think to yourself, like, where is that going? And that's the largest percentage of the increase. And then the last question is, across from the 2027 to 2030, you will start having new homes in that area. Do you have all of the expenses in fire and police truly mapped out for 622 residences in here?
That's not an approved project.
It is not.
No, we can't do that. And I want to project unrealized revenues that we don't have yet.
Yep.
Because we don't want to increase expenditures based off of, hey, we're going to get this revenue. So we normally only do it when a project goes to an active land development approval, which is why the Thompson and Bancroft are in there, and we work with our community development department to identify what all those permit types are going to be. It's a very long kind of staff-driven process where you have to do all of the projections for the projected sales of the homes from a millage standpoint, which is why you only see Bancroft in there. Now, the community impact study might give you some insights of what it means from a township impact, but that's also one where they projected conservatively high on the expenditure. So that would include additive need for police, additive fires, all that kind of stuff baked into.
So will that be done for next year's budget, or will you guys do that after the approved plan?
This thing tonight goes long in the tooth, and to be on next year, it'll be one where we'll have to project that.
Okay.
That would be, but since we wouldn't get those revenues for another few years, because they said you wouldn't get through all of the approvals and all the permitting and all of the other stuff, so you won't see a dime from that revenue probably until you start seeing vertical development.
So it's fair to say, no tax increases next year?
Correct.
You can't say for, go forward yet, because we don't have all these plans approved yet, but this 9.7 million that is projected for 2030 budget, so you did out the five years, that's a 19% increase in cost, even before you put in any additional cost.
And the biggest part of that is coming from the future replacement rate of your capital reserve position. So if you project it without that, it does go down. It's just, does that come from future growth, or does that come from future needs to raise revenue? That has yet to be decided.
I think it's important for taxpayers.
Correct.
Yeah. And just because it was brought up, the Pennsylvania State Police takes a portion in their salary from the liquid fuel stacks. That's why we have such great roads in the state of Pennsylvania. However, hopefully, we will adopt a preliminary budget this evening, and the state does not have a budget yet. That expired the 30th of June.
Some of the issues that you can see, I would encourage anybody, so I don't want to click all the way back through it, but at the very beginning of the budget cycle, what we do, what's called kind of a state of the township update, it's not necessarily like a pat on the back for prior performance, it's more of a, to me, just from my own kind of, you know, understanding of risks, what I mentioned at the beginning. It's kind of an insight into issues that the township is facing, future revenue shortfall, future infrastructure risks. And I can't probably say enough about how much we are prone to potential future impacts from rainfall events and our stormwater infrastructure, and that's a huge windfall capital expense that could come at any time, which was why I would say this is a big priority of the township to keep this intact, because at some point, if that happens, you're going to need a depth of resource to pay for that, because you can't expect the federal government just to give you money and keep it. It's normally a reimbursement. So there's a lot of things in there. It includes kind of an overview of the kind of funding position for police in this area. There's kind of a haves and have-nots. We're actually kind of very equivalent to what Canet pays, and they're actually investing even more. They're protecting to build a $10 million additive police facility next to their town hall. You have what's happening in Oxford right now, in terms of their ability to seek people who pay zero to pay more, and actually pay more than what Oxford pays for. It's going to be, as you said, a regional discussion. And we've had regional discussions about, do we find other merger candidates for, you know, adding people to our police department, that wholesaling function. It does take two to tango, though. So the gaining or losing kind of quote-unquote municipality has to agree to go into that agreement. It's just been a very solid conversation with fire services to start, but it doesn't mean it doesn't stop by not doing it, looking at a contingency police. But those are probably your number one, number two, year-over-year expenditure risks, because they're just the largest percentage of your budget, and they're very expensive endeavors to do in reality. But that's why it comes down to, what are you committed to as a community to funding and having support for?
Yeah, and there are currently a number of townships in Chester County that have stormwater fees for the residents.
Correct. And even then, that's one where you can just go down a rabbit hole in terms of what that looks like, but at the end of the day, because of state legislation, or excuse me, state litigation, excuse me, about enactment of a stormwater fee based off of net impervious surface versus net assessed value of property, if you do it off of what's guaranteed today, which is that assessable value property, that's not an equitable delivery of a stormwater fee function, because, just because your home or whatever is assessed at a value, but it doesn't have as much impervious, you would be overly distributing the burden towards higher assessed values that don't necessarily have larger impervious surface areas, which are contributing to the problem in the first place. So that's why there's no planned recommendation to do that right now, because it would be a, I can imagine that would be like a large community process to go through that as well. And that's with Westchester University and Westchester Borough is that cited case, which I don't think they solved yet.
No.
A lot of things take a long time with the state level.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for walking us through the budget. I think at this point, the board has to approve advertisement of the fiscal 2026 proposed budget.
If you remember, the 30-day window doesn't coincide with the November meeting, so there's two ways to do it. So there's two ways to do it. You can do it at the December meeting or you can host a special meeting in the end of November to do it, to approve it as kind of in a formality to that. So whatever you decide upon, um, I just want to make sure you provide direction of what you would prefer to do.
So if we advertise it tonight, we could adopt it in the December meeting.
You can December, a hundred percent. Yep.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
What date's the December meeting? Like what?
Uh, third Monday. That's all I know.
Fifteen, fifteenth.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's only because November, it's not within the, it's outside of the, excuse me, in the thirty days.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of the fiscal twenty twenty-six proposed budget in the amount of fourteen million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next, we have the appropriation for the fourth quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-five for Avondale Fire Company in Southern Chester County EMS in the total amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. Chris, did you want to make any comment on that or should we just take a vote?
This is the fourth of four payments. Uh, this is based off the approved FY twenty-five budget. If you remember, we did these in quarterly distributions to kind of ease out that kind of in-year treasury function. So this is just another, the finalized payment.
And Steve's not gonna leave until we do this vote.
No, and that that um that also includes the relief fund, which is pass-through money.
This doesn't include that, but that's another line item in the budget.
Right, that that was, that was.
And that's pass-through funding that comes from the state that goes to the relief fund for the firefighters. Is that in this invoice cycle as well?
It is.
Yes, it is. So there you see it.
Yeah, so.
Is there a motion to approve the appropriation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Next, we have three escrow releases. So we have two for Copper Leaf Ridge Escrow Release Number Six and Escrow Release Number Seven. This is the formerly the Rouse Chamberlain neighborhood. Esc- Escrow Release Number Six is in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Escrow Release Seven is in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Release Number Six and Release Number Seven for Copper Leaf Ridge.
Is there a second to approve each of the two releases?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Stone Bridge Escrow Release Number Seven. Such amount is nineteen thousand even. Is there a motion to approve the Stone Bridge Escrow Release Number Seven?
I'll make a motion to approve the release.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next, we've got the Pengreen Road Detour Plan. Robert, you're taking that? Thank you.
Uh, just on one, two comments on the last two escrow releases. Both of those projects are moving along fairly well. Uh, the Copper Leaf, I believe they have sixteen units that are up out of the ground. So doing well and we're working with Stone Bridge to get those started. There's some, as you'll find at the end of the meeting, the um pump and haul agreement. But anyhow, the Pengreen Road Detour kind of got a uh impromptu test this morning with a pole being knocked out at Pengreen and uh and Star. So they were running down um Santilly and um up back up Pengreen. But anyhow, this uh land development plan, Gail Ferrante is here with Pleasantville. Um, it is an approved plan. What happened was when they were doing their stormwater, the pipe going under. Um, Pengreen Road was determined to um be disrepair. So PennDOT's requiring that sto- that pipe to be replaced. PennDOT will be providing the pipe. Their their contractor will be doing the excavation work of it. The detour plan, as you see, um is again Pengreen to Santilly and um to keep people going down Pengreen Road. So that um it's gonna be on a weekend to be determined. Um, with the paving of it, the final paving of it would be on a Monday with two, you know, one lane just being closed, but the the road would be open. So um, we brought it to you, um, talked with Kenny about it. We felt that the board should be approving or giving guidance on this detour um so we can get back to PennDOT. It's just one weekend. Like they want to do it before before winter. So everything's kind of in place. Uh, you could see that the engineer had a couple of comments. Um, this administrative that can be worked out.
So um, I think if if the board approves this, we should be very specific about what you're approving because that's what the law says. There's a letter from Bowman that outlines and identifies the where the signs go and how the plan is set up. From what you're saying, PennDOT has approved this.
PennDOT has not approved it because the township has to give them a letter stating that they're in agreement with it. But PennDOT has given a verbal yes. The formality, let's not.
I saw there was a meeting between them. So um, there is a letter from Bowman Engineering that says that outlines the detour. So I think that your motion should be to, assuming you want to, um, to approve the designation of the detour plan in accordance with the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five letter from Bowman and authorizing and requiring the placing of signage to comply with requirements that the detour be adequately marked. Has that, and you notify the fire company and schools, maybe not because it's weekend, but the fire company. That's it.
That's fine. Yes.
You know, we knew the structure as Chris was saying, it's aging and it's township. So um, you know, our first goal right now is to get our home built, get our house if it's. So, you know, we asked the contractor if he could do it on the weekend, the left wing impacted votes. He agreed, which I think it's really nice to do that. Um, and PennDOT that they would supply the pipe, that's another, you know, good thing. You know, so we're hoping that he would approve the detour plan.
I don't, I think that's fine. Uh, if.
That's what what PennDOT said.
Yeah, if, actually, if if another month doesn't bother you, I'd rather do a resolution that's more specific. But I don't want to delay it if you thought you were gonna be doing it within the next thirty days. Okay, so waiting for them to take action on it until next month is okay. I mean, they could approve it, but then we could adopt a resolution with all the the note.
We direct them to send the letter to PennDOT?
Yeah, that's fine. How about that? And then we'll just do a resolution that itemizes each stop at sign. Yeah, yeah, if that's fine. If you don't mind that and they can send a letter so PennDOT can know we approved it.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And it may not get.
No, no, no.
No, it's fine.
That's up to you. This just, if you don't mind for sure another month, then I would just rather do a resolution.
For PennDOT's purposes, we give them their letter kind of on track. It doesn't move anything. And then for the township's administrative purposes, we need to formalize this into a motion for a resolution. It will be done in November.
If that's okay, okay.
What action you need tonight? We still need to approve.
Robert, you just need them to approve notifying PennDOT that that the township approves.
And sure, a letter to them saying that the township agrees to to allow that to be the detour route with the plan and Bowman's um.
Here's our roads for the.
Yep, and Bowman's letter.
Okay.
And the timeframe is just whenever.
Never. Okay.
So is there a motion to approve what Robert and Winnie said?
Yeah, I was wondering how you. I'll make the motion as long as it says that outlines the traffic plan listed by Bowman and they're directing the traffic along the township roads. I think that's the issue.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next, we have the zoning hearing board application for one ninety-one Laurel Heights Road.
I believe the applicant is in the back of the room, so they are present. If they want to make any comments, they can. Um, but as you can see, it's uh, they're taking a residential property and carving out ten acres for a family member. Um, what what they need, they're seeking the variance from is the um little stub road off of Keller Her Drive that services nothing. It's one of those ones that goes for future development, but there's nothing to it. Then it's only fifty foot wide. Well, the ordinance says that they have to be a hundred and fifty feet of property at at the property line or the right-of-way line and at the building envelope. So that's what they're seeking a variance from. By any commission, we'll hear it Wednesday night. And it's just due to timing, which is permitted.
So do we need to approve anything?
You don't have to take any action if you do not want to.
Yeah, so the the driveway is gonna access off the stub road?
Correct.
And that's adjacent to your property. What's that?
Black, blacks.
Black horse or something?
Yeah, black horse.
Black horse. And that will turn into a driveway or is it gonna be an extension of the road? What it, what is the variance for?
The variance is for the the width at um the property line, which has to be a hundred and fifty feet. You may remember um one seventy-four maple kind of had to do the same thing.
Correct. And we granted that variance.
Correct.
Okay, just in full disclosure, I live down the street, so that's my neighbor. I don't think I'm in the five hundred foot notification.
Uh, I don't know. There's, it was in your packet.
I doubt it.
They don't think you're on the list.
I need binoculars to read that. Ju- just nod.
Yeah.
So what does the board want to do? Do we want to take no vote?
Uh, I just wanted to point out that the Pearson's spent a lot of their own money that they didn't need to to do to uh fix up their historic property that was on Laurel Heights Road to make it look more like it used to look um back in the day. So I think that was a nice thing they did for the township. Maybe the township should do a nice thing for them in return and support the. Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we support their request from the, from the variance from the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, and for clarification, Winnie.
Is.
Yeah, so for clarification, I don't believe I'm on the the list of being within five hundred feet. So I feel I can vote fairly and I agree with David, so I'm gonna second the motion.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next, we have the Route Seven Line of Sight Grading Project.
Uh, so if you remember, and um Mike Buck, Parks and Open Space Director, is not here tonight, so I'll do my best to cover for him. But uh, we had a original motion to award the grading bid uh in terms of the um the bid summary from August timeframe. And that was one where it was contingent upon having the um, oh. I'll wait for uh clearing out here. Just couldn't take the last agenda item. It was too much. Uh, so with that, it was penned upon the certification from PennDOT's perspective for the uh the bidder uh that we were gonna potentially award it to. Turns out they didn't uh have that certification met. So we had to rebid the project. Uh, so we rebid it. Uh, Bowman provided uh their ability to certify that the second bidder was certified, the first lowest bidder was not. Uh, so that's why the recommendation is in your packet today for that amount, which actually ended up being about five thousand dollars cheaper overall. Of course, this is one where the proceeds coming from a grant that we have, which is about a hundred thousand dollar grant, and the component of the remaining cost, which is sixty-seven thousand dollars, that's coming from in-year use of open space revenues coming from that as well. So no, no general fund or capital funding for this project. And of course, it's to improve the line of sight along Route Seven so you could have better uh vision as you're turning left into to St. Anthony's New Garden Hills along Limestone Road. And this would be one where uh if if approved for the award, uh, it would be a construction timeline, hopefully to complete by the end of the year.
Is there a motion to uh award the construction bid to G and G Construction in the total amount of hundred and twenty, not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty-two dollars?
I just wanted a clarification that since we'll be doing a grant, um, this is a new grant that we're applying for?
No, this is an existing grant. So if you remember, uh, in twenty-three timeframe, we had a DCD grant that do phase two of that specific project, which was the uh stream restoration, as well as there was like kids playground facilities, a lot of different things. It was a pretty significant cost. And since we kind of decommissioned that plan, we we took that grant and we reinvested it. We got the approval uh from DCD to port it over to another project. So instead of in the park, it's now for outside of the park on Route Seven to improve the infrastructure along Route Seven.
Okay.
So so out of pocket on this particular.
It would be the sixty-seven thousand coming from the open space fund.
Okay.
That works for me. I'll make the motion to approve that.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And Robert, you got the last item too? Pump and haul?
The Stone Bridge Development is seeking uh approval via a pump and haul agreement to install at five of the houses, the new houses, an agreement that there won't actually be a holding tank, but the structure for a public sewer will be there. And within that structure, the sewer for the sewage for those houses will be pumped out on a regular basis. Uh, in order to get DEP to approve that, there's a permit um that's submitted. The township is a perma-tee and um they want this pump and haul agreement as a part of that permit. And it seems to me that's a pretty significant thing so that the board should be aware that they're seeking that. Uh, I have not been able to confirm the water is there, the Chester Water is there. So I'm trying to confirm that because obviously if you don't have water on lots that small, issuing building permits can also be a problem unless what? Unless Robert knows something I don't know.
So the water's there. It just hasn't been, um, the bacteria hasn't been passed. So the water is there. The tanks are in for the regular pump station that, you know, they're constructing those now. We're just holding up the building permits till this agreement comes in and there's a driveway entrance, a roadway entrance in to start building those houses so you can get access if you need, you know, ambulances or whatever. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay.
The pump and haul agreement is, it needs to be in place as well.
Yeah.
Is that a temporary?
Yeah.
Yeah, solution?
Yes, because.
Okay.
The there, there's, gravity sanitary sewer is not hooked in yet, but it will be within four months. Same time that the model home will be about done and then um residents can move in. So it's not uncommon to do it this way.
No, I've done them before. I just never have done one with, anyway, yes, I have done them before. I've written them before and if, because I kept trying to find out from Chester Water what the story was and nobody knew, so.
Yeah, well.
Surprise, surprise. Um, so what if you'd authorize the, because it's our permit application? And can in with that is also the pump and haul agreement.
Yeah, a couple of questions on the agreement. Does it, it's limited to five units?
Yes.
And is there a timeframe? Is there a, is there a sunset to it?
It's any, I think it's eight months. That was the, what Stan recommended, I believe. Because six months often isn't long enough. Um, and they will be inspected every three days, I think, because they're small. It's not, there's a model home and then four others. The model home is less of a problem because nobody's gonna live there. The other four people will actually potentially move into them without full septic.
Without, without being tied in.
Without being connected because they need the, they actually need the flows to be able to connect them.
Right. And the other part of it is it's gonna take them four months to build the house anyway.
Exactly. Okay, so as long as there's a sunset and then do we need to put in there a hold harmless agreement? If they do default and don't get sewer and they've built five homes.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the agreement. I don't.
I'm okay with that.
Need to vote, yeah.
Yes, as long as those are in there, we're good.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve forwarding the application to the DEP?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Next is the manager's report. Chris, did you have anything?
No manager's report for tonight.
Great. Anything else? Anything, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. It's for Kenny, actually. Uh, I was speaking to a resident uh this weekend who was on uh Hillendale Road. And he was expressing concern about the um construction that's being done at the new houses there, specifically the damage to the road that um occurred when those uh pipes were put in. And he was wondering how long that road was going to be in that condition. Okay, thank you. In the meantime, are there any signs? I know that there's already like detour signs there, but anything about like rough road ahead or something that we could put out just to people? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing I want to announce is the Santa Train will be back. It'll be coming to um Tough Kenniman and various other towns. They're, they're starting in Oxford this year, so they're running it into Kennet. Last year, they ran Kennet to West Grove and it'll be um in Tough Kenniman at 1340 to 1425. So that is 140 to 225. So it'll be there for roughly 45 minutes. Did I get that right?
I can confirm your military time is correct.
Okay. So Tough Kenniman.
What day?
That would be um.
Uh, will we go ahead and pair this out on all of our township communications? So it'll be heavily advertised for that event.
Saturday, the 29th of November. Put it in regular time in the ad.
Great. Third motion adjourned?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.